And tuberculosis. Prevention, screening and treatment for sexually transmitted infections. Prevention, screening and treatment for reproductive cancers, including cervical cancer, breast cancer, testicular cancer and prostate cancer. So these are some of the most common and most devastating cancers according to the studies within the region. Family planning and contraceptives information, education and services. And prenatal, delivery and postnatal healthcare. It should also provide for exclusive breastfeeding for at least six months and immunization and treatment for early childhood diseases for infants. And also provides recommended nutrition to support growth. And you should be accessible to early childhood for toddlers. And specifically also, the bill requires that this package, the universal health coverage package in each partner state should also include sexual and reproductive health services for people living with disabilities, older persons and the elderly. Now. With regard to the section reproductive health for adolescents and young people. Clause seven of the bill provides for age and culturally appropriate comprehensive sexuality education. The bill requires that every country or every partner state should provide in their curriculum scientifically based age, gender and culturally appropriate sexuality education. For the well health and well being of adolescents and young people. The bill uses these words very specifically, not generally. And if you look at the bill, the words have been chosen to first of all put into context the kind of comprehensive sexuality education. So it's not general sexuality comprehensive education. It must be scientifically based. It must be age appropriate. And it must also be gender and culturally appropriate education. This is the kind of education that the bill is requiring, not any other. Now, the bill goes ahead again to require that this education should be accurate, science and evidence based and should take into account the age and evolving capacity and the needs understanding of the individuals at each stage. If they are adolescents, it should be appropriate for their age and their evolving capacity. If they are young people, it should be appropriate for their age and evolving capacity. If they are older persons, if they are elderly, these are the aspects that must go into this kind of education. The bill also requires that the comprehensive sexuality education should take into account the national, cultural and social values of the individuals at each stage of life and then the rights and needs of which gender should also be balanced in this education. Now. The bill also provides that in clause eight, that the process of developing or coming up with this comprehensive sexuality education should be collaborative and inclusive and should, at the very minimum, involve the following categories of people. Education institutions, adolescents, the youth, teachers, parents and guardians, health professionals, if it's going to be science based, the private sector, civil society organizations, the community, cultural, religious and faith based organizations and leaders. These are some of the organizations and persons that must be consulted in developing this comprehensive sexuality education to ensure that it meets then the basic requirements of the bill. Now, again, with regard to the section reproductive health for adolescents and young people, the bill provides in clause nine, for every adolescent or young person to have access to safe, effective, non judgmental and acceptable age appropriate sexual reproductive health information, education and services. They, as I said, that the bill does not use the words, the promoters of the bill are using their words very carefully and so they should not be taken out of context in which they are used. The access that is being required to be provided must be safe, must be effective, must be non judgmental and acceptable, but also age appropriate. Now, in order to harmonize the information in each partner state, as the chairperson and director alluded to the fact that this is, once this bill passes, then it will be a regional law, meaning it will have to take effect in each of the partner states. What the bill is proposing is that the council of ministers, who are your ministers responsible for E S C affairs, when they sit together at the regional level, they are referred to as the council of ministers. So that they sit together and issue directives or guidelines on the nature of information and education and services that should be provided to adolescents and young people in each partner state. This is to ensure that there is no disparity from what is provided in Uganda and then what is provided in Kenya, Burundi, Tanzania or Kenya or South Sudan. Now, the bill also requires that where the section reproductive health services are not provided free of charge, that they should be provided at a cost which is affordable to adolescents and young people. In many our societies, these adolescents and young people are not working or employed. So if the services are put at prices at which they cannot access them, then that becomes a hindrance for them to obtain or access the services. In addition, the bill is providing that some of the things that really need to be included include the right of every adolescent or young person to exercise sexuality independently, free of violence and coercion. And it should also provide some access to methods for the prevention, diagnosis and treatment of sexually transmitted infections and HIV and information relating to contraceptives and specifically also access to clean and safe menstrual hygiene products for adolescent girls and young women. Now, in order to balance the requirements of the bill with the responsibilities and duties of the parents and guardians, the bill places a duty on every parent or guardian or every person with parental responsibility to provide age and culturally appropriate sexual and reproductive health information to the adolescents or young persons under their care. This you'll find in clause ten of the bill. The bill also recognizes that the adolescents and young people have a right to access sexual reproductive health services that are appropriate for their age and this is therefore being provided for in clause eleven of the bill. And as such, the bill requires healthcare providers to explain to each adolescent or young person the nature and consequences of the specific sexual or reproductive services that they are accessing or are going to receive. The bill recognizes that there are healthcare professionals who may object to provide or providing specific sexual or reproductive health information or services based on either their religion or other cultural norms. These are usually referred to as the consensus objectors. And the bill recognizes that these people may be within the communities. What the bill requires is that for anybody who objects to providing a specific sexual reproductive health service consensiously on the ground of their religion, they still have a duty to refer the adolescent or young person to another healthcare provider or health professional for them to be able to receive the service. Again, the bill makes specific reference for provision of sexual reproductive services for persons with disabilities to be able to also enjoy and fully realize their sexual reproductive health rights. This you'll find in clause fifteen of the bill. Specifically, clause thirteen provides for menstrual hygiene and health. And in this regard, the bill requires each partner state to establish menstrual hygiene spaces that are clean, safe and dignified in all health facilities, schools and other public facilities. And specifically, this should include access by all persons to clean disposable or reusable sanitary towels or other menstrual hygiene products, access to clean and private facilities to change sanitary towels as often as necessary for the duration of the menstrual period, access to soap and water for hygiene and sanitation in the public spaces and then availability of dignified, safe and environmentally sound facilities for disposal of sanitary towels and other menstrual hygiene products. The bill also specifically provides for sexual reproductive healthcare for men and this you'll find in clause fourteen of the bill. So the bill requires each partner state to offer provider initiated information and develop programs that include reproductive healthcare services for men, which should include screening and treatment for disorders of the male reproductive system, including sexual dysfunctions, infertility, urological diseases and other common sexual reproductive health disorders and also preconception information and services for men. With regard to termination of pregnancy, there are differences in the way that the different partner states have dealt with this issue. There are differences with the way termination of pregnancy is dealt, treated in Rwanda, South Sudan, Burundi, Tanzania, Uganda and Kenya. Now, we have two extremes. We have countries that are liberal in respect of termination of pregnancy and in the community that we have of the six partner states, the Republic of Rwanda is the most liberal. Then we have countries that are not that permissive. So the most restrictive that we have is the Republic of Kenya, which is closely followed by Uganda. Now, for the other partner states, this restrict, the permissiveness restrictions are not contained in the constitutions. For Kenya and Uganda, they have specific provisions in the constitutions of these two partner states that relate to this subject. In Kenya, article twenty six two of their constitution provides that life begins at conception and that abortion is not permitted unless, in the opinion of a trained health professional, there is need for emergency treatment or the life or health of the mother is in danger or if permitted by any other written law. This is article twenty six, two and four of the constitution of Kenya. In Uganda, article twenty two two of your constitution provides that no person has the right to terminate the life of an as may be authorized by law. That's article twenty two. Now, because of the challenge that we have, the community is a community that comes as a result of cooperation. And as I said, article one one eight, the partners agreed to cooperate in the area of health. What the community, the East African community recognizes is that matters that are specifically provided for in the partner state's constitutions cannot be contradicted by regional or community laws. So that is why I was highlighting the aspect of the liberal ones versus the restrictive ones. So because of that aspect, what the bill provides is to strike a balance between, the bill could not go for the option that is permissible, for example, in the most liberal partner state, which is Rwanda. So what it does is it takes the provisions that are in the constitution and ensures that it does not contradict what is in the constitution of Kenya, which is the most restrictive of all. So the bill provides that a person may terminate a pregnancy if, in the opinion of a health professional, there is need for emergency treatment, the pregnancy endangers the mental or physical health or life of the woman, or in the case of sexual assault, rape, incest or as may be permitted by the law of a partner state. So that is the balance that the bill is striking in respect of those highlighted provisions. So the departure that the bill is making in respect of, for example, post abortion care, the bill is requiring that every person is entitled to receive post abortion care and treatment as a health and life saving medical intervention. Now, this is regardless of whether the abortion is legal or illegal in the partner state. This is to clarify the law and to provide protection from prosecution to health professionals who provide the life and health saving post abortion care and treatment. There are instances even here in Uganda where medical personnel have been arrested for, by the police for providing care because the abortion is illegal. So what the bill is clarifying is that the health professionals have a duty to provide this care and they cannot be prosecuted or arrested for providing post abortion care. So the bill is separating aspects of criminality from aspects of health and life saving medical interventions. The other aspect that the bill provides is in respect of family planning and contraceptives education and services. The bill recognizes the right of every individual to freely and responsibly determine whether to have children or not, the number, the timing and the spacing of these children. The bill recognizes that this is an individual right that is inherent in every person and as such, it requires that every partner state should make family planning, education, services and contraceptives available and accessible to every individual as part of their integrated health services provided in that partner state for them to be able to make that choice and decision. The bill also has provisions relating to protection from HIV and AIDS and other sexually transmitted infections. We already have a community law, the East African Community HIV and AIDS Prevention and Management Act, which was enacted in twenty twelve. And that act discourages discrimination against those living with HIV AIDS. The act also provides for the protection and promotion of the rights of persons living with HIV AIDS within the community. Unfortunately, this act has not yet been commenced. So what this bill is doing is to use some of the provisions in respect of the protection that are in that law for purposes of ensuring that there is protection for for persons within the community. The other aspect that the bill concerns itself with or provides for is preconception, prenatal, delivery and postnatal healthcare. This is again arising from the studies that have been conducted within the community. What the bill is ensuring is that partner state should promote the right of every woman to safe motherhood, including the right to access information and quality services throughout pregnancy, childbirth and post part term period with the desired outcome of a live and healthy baby. So there are services that the bill requires in respect of this for that desired outcome to be achieved. Clause twelve of the bill provides for continuation of education after pregnancy. Again, from the studies that have been conducted within the community, this is another area that is problematic in some communities. So what the bill is requiring that for adolescent girls who become pregnant before completing their education, they should be given an opportunity with the appropriate facilities, either during pregnancy or within a reasonable period after delivery to continue with their education. Now, because this has been a problematic area in the community, the bill is requiring that each partner state reports to the community or to the assembly through the secretary general of the community on the measures that each partner state has put in place to ensure that girls who become pregnant before completing their education have the facilities and opportunity to be able to complete school or to continue their school. Now, another aspect that is being provided is in respect of the regulation of assisted reproductive technologies. Again, what assisted reproductive technologies is one of the areas, one of the terms that is defined by the bill. If you look under clause three, the assisted reproductive technologies are defined. Now. The bill recognizes that fertility medication and procedures such as that facial insemination, in vitro fertilization and surrogacy are already being used to assist persons with reproductive challenges in the community. What the bill is requiring is noting also is that it is the responsibility of the policy organs, the assemblies, the ministers, the executives and the community to ensure that these methods that are already being used in the community are safe and effective and that they are not abused. So what clause twenty one of the bill is requiring is that each country should regulate these technologies with a view to ensuring that they are not abused and that they are safe. In them, the bill is providing or requiring partner states to restrict these technologies to persons who are certified by a health professional as medically unable to bear children or to carry a pregnancy to term, that this should be restricted to only those two categories, not be opened up. And also that commercial surrogacy and the sale of children borne through surrogacy or other assisted reproductive technology should be prohibited in each partner state. And that where these are allowed, these should only be provided by designated healthcare providers who are specifically licensed for this purpose, not every health professional. So the bill is providing these, that partner states should put in place measures for this purpose to ensure that the assisted reproductive technologies are safe for the community. Now, a critical aspect of the bill is the prohibition of harmful practices. They are, from, through studies that have been conducted within the community, there are certain harmful practices that have been identified which affect the sexual reproductive specific categories of thirty thousand US dollars. Specifically, with regard to child marriages. The bill provides that a child, any person below the age of eighteen does not and as such, the bill prohibits child and requires specific legislation to be put in place specifying the minimum age of marriage, but the bill provides that in any case, a person who is under the age of eighteen does not have the capacity to consent to a marriage. Now, this comes directly from obligations of the partner states like Uganda under the African Charter on the Rights of and Welfare of the Child, which has specific obligations to that effect and which partner states have already committed to. Now, the bill makes it a duty of every presiding officer, priest, Imam, registrars in the registries to establish the age of the parties to a marriage. So it provides that every person authorized by the laws of a partner state to solemnize a marriage or conduct a marriage ceremony is required to establish, verify and record the age of the parties to an intended marriage before solemnizing, conducting or performing the marriage ceremony. This is in clause twenty four of the bill. And the bill recognizes that there are already existing or subsisting child marriages. So there are victims who are already in these marriages. So what the bill is requiring is that the ministers in each partner state who are responsible for children affairs or social protection, they should establish and put in place measures for protecting these people who are already in these child marriages from the physical, mental and mental injury or abuse that they may suffer or are suffering as a result of being in these marriages. And these measures should include an opportunity for them to opt out of of these marriages. The bill also has provisions relating to sexual and gender based violence in clause twenty six of the bill, which I'll not go into. And lastly, clauses twenty seven and twenty eight require or provide for the community to develop and implement appropriate public awareness strategies which are sensitive to age, gender, religion and culture, which should be translated and mainstreamed in the major local languages for purposes of ensuring that everybody understands and enjoys their sexual reproductive health rights and access the services. So for purposes of ensuring that this is done, the bill requires each partner state to record, to report to the community every two years on what they are doing. Chairperson and distinguished participants, these are the highlights of what the bill that you have before you is providing for. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dennis Kibirige. I also want to welcome Honorable Paul M. Samali, one of our colleagues, a member of this committee, a member of parliament at the Yala. You're welcome. So you have got good details from the legal drafts person, Dennis Kibirige. My view is that we go into the discussion of the bill. But just to make you aware that we are here to get information from you, to get your views. So we're not going to be answering questions saying, answer this question, want to get your views in as far as the bill is concerned. And then when we go to discuss as a committee and together with the entire parliament, we shall be able to put those views into consideration. So I think the modus operandi we could use, we could maybe, I don't know if we go by, we go part by part, like the four parts, or whether we can have, since they are just views, we get generic views from each and every member because they are just general views. So the floor is open. Let's have your inputs in as far as the bill is concerned. So I request that, yes, we shall start with a lady, a lady first. Shall start with the lady, then the gentleman. You mention your name, the organization you represent, and maybe you can even refer to a specific page or where you want your comments to be captured. Yes, madam? The microphone is there.
So Chair, before I make my submission, I was just asking, are we having a health break because we are talking about right to health first?
But we have just begun.
Otherwise, if that is answered, then I will make my submission.
Yes, you can go ahead. Maybe to answer your question, I've been advised that it's almost lunch and we have a lot of work to do. So if we go to breakfast for lunch, that's another one hour, we shall spend the time eating than working the whole day. So we shall do both. The organizers can, please, the organizers, you have to answer those questions. The organizers can, please, the organizers, you have to answer those questions.
At least we have a working tea. Okay, anyway, let me go ahead with my submission.
I think maybe there is a challenge. I'm informed that there is a challenge. You know, these are called open methods of work. They are trying to manage an emergency. I think the numbers are more than invited. So if they say go for tea, others will not have tea. So they are trying to manage, see what they can do. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Guzu Pitaris. I am representing National Council for Persons with Disabilities. So first of all, my comments, I will not cite the page, but I'll just be citing the clauses. My first comment is on clause three, on the section of interpretation. For the sake of being accommodative to all the different categories of people that have been mentioned in this bill, I would request that let's add in the interpretation section, interpretation of the other categories, like persons with disabilities, even disability first, and then persons with disabilities, and then older persons. Because maybe in the partner states, we have different age groups, groupings for the older persons. So it will be good to know in the interpretation, what people are we talking about, from which age? And then also, the other things to be added in the interpretation in relation to persons with disabilities is the issue of reasonable accommodation, which I will also suggest that should be incorporated, I mean incorporated in the section where we shall discuss about persons with disabilities. But the interpretation should be put here first. And then also, non-discrimination, so that we all have the same understanding of what non-discrimination is. And then accessibility, support services, all these are related to persons with disabilities. And I'm ready to share with you some of the interpretations borrowing from our law, the Persons with Disabilities Act 2020. Then maybe you can pick from other countries as well. Then going direct to the section on, section fifteen, which is talking particularly about persons with disabilities. The provisions there are quite okay, reasonable. But as I mentioned, I think there should be an insertion of that the reproductive health facilities shall provide reasonable accommodation to persons with disabilities. And then there should also be an insertion of, if this reasonable accommodation is not provided for, there should be a reprimand in relation to that. Then, as I said, when we mentioned the reasonable accommodation in the interpretation section, then we shall not be, I mean, we may not be required to mention it again in that particular section. Then the other comment maybe is on the clause in relation to the assistive reproductive technologies. When they were giving up the highlight, but also when I read in the document, I think there is, there should be an insertion of the protection of the rights of the surrogate mothers from sexual, from exploitation and abuse. Because most of these surrogate mothers, most sometimes are from poor families. So they may not be paid well by the ones whom require the baby. So their rights should be protected. And then lastly, in the bill, I've not seen schedules to describe certain particular things. For instance, if you are talking about persons with disabilities, there should be a schedule to describe the different categories. Because maybe different countries within the East African community, they recognize different categories. But we should have a description on that. And then all countries will take, depending on what they recognize in their different countries. Then also, there could be a schedule on accessibility standards. Because when you are talking about persons with disabilities, there should be certain standards for accessibility, maybe in the building, accessibility of information, accessibility, all of that. So the standards should be able to describe what is required by the partner state. So the schedule will support. So for now, that is my submission. Maybe others will come later. Then lastly, I want to request that in the future, when you're inviting persons with disabilities for such meetings, please provide for our reasonable accommodation, like large print documents. These ones are very tiny. If I'm a low-vision person, I'll not be able to read. And then brailing, braille is also key. But also, if you are sending soft copies, which is also another alternative, make it in Word. Because PDF is not very compatible with our software. For instance, this one, I struggled to read it much as I managed to read. But next time, give us Word documents. Thank you so much, Chair Person.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There was a gentleman. But I request, in the interest of time, let's agree, how many minutes? Remember, we have almost a hundred participants. How many minutes? Four minutes? Five minutes? Is it okay? So who's going to be our timekeeper? I will request, who can be our timekeeper? You'll be our timekeeper. Yes, the youth. Yes, please, five minutes.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'll stick the five minutes. I'm Richard D. Wanzala. I work at the Center for Reproductive Rights. I'm the advocator, advisor for Uganda and Zambia. So this is a proposal that on clause two, under the objectives of the Act, which says to promote and provide for age-appropriate. So we want to insert between where there's younger people. On B, we want to insert their evolving, with their evolving capacities. The proposed change ensures that the principle of evolving capacities speaks to all sections of the clause. And then under clause six, under the integration of sexual reproductive health services in partner states. Three N says, access to permitted safe and effective abortion services. We like the clause to be amended to read as access to safe abortion care. The inclusion of the word permitted is restrictive and may hinder access to safe abortion services. This is because in other countries like Mr. Chibikor saying, we lack guidance on access to safe abortion, other than in the penal code where it is mainly criminalized. Then on clause nine, which says sexual reproductive health for adolescents and young people. So it says every adolescent and young person shall have access to safe, effective, non-judgmental. It is, so we want to propose that it is amended to read. Every partner state shall ensure, instead of saying every adolescent, all young person shall have access to, so this places the honors on adolescents. Yet we would like the honors of providing for this service to be placed on the states. So saying we should add, every partner state shall ensure that every adolescent or young person shall have access to. I'll share this write-up with the rapporteur, just in case I'm running short of time. And then on clause sixteen, under determination of pregnancy. It says a woman may terminate a pregnancy if, in the opinion of a health professional, then it continues. So we would like to say that instead of saying a woman, we replace that with a pregnant person. Because the moment you say a woman, you're going to exclude girls and adolescents who may not consider themselves women, but they do find themselves pregnant and they need these services. Then on clause seventeen, health and life-saving post-abortion care and treatment. Yeah, that one, we are happy with it, the way it is, notwithstanding any law. A health professional who provides post-abortion care or treatment shall not be prostituted for service provided. So thank the team, not that we are not happy with the others, but just want to signpost this progressive clause. On clause twenty, on preception, prenatal, delivery, and postnatal health care. Again, here, we like to include a clause that say H, which prohibits all forms of obstetric violence, including physical, verbal, emotional violence or abuse and failure to pay any dues. We've seen people who have been detained in hospitals for failure to pay dues. So we like to, the community, to insert a treaty that prohibits detention of clients for failure to pay dues, because it's an obligation of the state to ensure that these services are provided. And lastly, on assisted reproductive technologies. Clause twenty-one A, it says restricting assisted reproductive technologies to persons who are satisfied by health professionals. Here, we like it to read that A, restricting assisted reproductive technologies to persons who are satisfied by health professionals as, then we insert as requiring assisted reproductive services. The reason behind this is that the proposed amendment, there are circumstances that may necessitate use of ART, that's assisted reproductive technology services, outside the ones that, the two that are provided. So let's leave this to the judgment of the health professionals to include the other sections. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you very much. You are almost exceeding five minutes, but you are on time. I'm requesting, we have someone who's online, then before we come back to, so to involve them. I will have Diana, Ms. Diana Tivessigwa, she's online, if she can give her views. Who are the rapporteurs? Rapporteurs? Ah, okay, very good. So for those who have group views, I know we have like the religious council. We have the youth, women, leaders, cultural. I request that you submit the written views, if you have a presentation, a prepared document to the rapporteur. You can still give your views here, but the written ones, you submit them to help us a lot. IT?
Okay. Thank you very much. This is Diana Tivessigwa. I'm online. I don't know if I'm very audible.
Yes, you are.
I, okay, I work with Lani International, Uganda. And thank you so much for putting this bill in place. I think it is timely. My comment is that, first of all, the bill is saying that it is providing SRHR services to everyone. I am proposing that we have a definition of everyone. Because when you go further into the details of how it has been presented, it is looking so much on young people and adolescents. So can we also include the specifics, to include also children in the emergencies? Adolescents and young people in the emergencies. Then the bill is also looking at issues of child marriage. And if you notice, for example, in Uganda, we have laws that are criminalizing defilement and rape. But we don't have a law that criminalizes child marriage. So can we have the SRHR law, if it comes into place, to at least mandate member states to criminalize child marriage? Because at the moment, I think other countries can also testify, we have issues of criminalizing child marriage in form of defilement and rape. Then the other aspect was the issue of parental consent. We have had a section where we are instructing parents to provide the SRHR information, age-appropriate, to their children. However, in some countries, it still requires parental consent for children to access, for example, SRH and family planning services. So what is the SRHR law putting in place in order to strengthen that gap? Because we are looking at an environment where children are taking decisions by themselves to acquire these services. But within our laws, we are still mandated for parents to do, to give consent for them to acquire these services. Yeah, I think for now, those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Diana. So they are captured. Let's go here now. I can start from the parent, representative from the parents. And then we come this side. You know, we are all parents. Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephen Langa, and I'm representing parents and families in Uganda. This is a bill that is very close to us as parents. And I'm glad that we are, many of us here are parents, and obviously, all of us come from a family in one way or another. Can I please have the presentation? Yes, thank you.
You want to make a presentation?
Yes.
It will be in five minutes?
Well, I'll need a little more, but
Because my challenge is, if everyone is going to make a presentation, my view would be
No, 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 Chair, Chair. Parents have a very, very, very important voice that you need to hear. You need to hear.
So we agree, we give the parents a relative, seven minutes?
Ten.
Ten minutes?
Yes, yeah, ten minutes.
Okay, okay. All right, ten minutes for the parents' representative.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, it's not moving.
IT, please.
Yes, thank you. All right. Thank you for the great work done. We really appreciate the time spent, the hours. We really appreciate. Now, legislation is a very important thing and foundational in the stability of any nation. And because of that, it is important to see what kind of legislation are we actually putting in place. Because wrong legislation will actually result in dangerous things happening in a nation. So we need to be cognizant of what kind of legislation we are talking about. A case in point. In nineteen sixty-four, President Lyndon Johnson of the US came up with a very, very ambitious Great Society domestic agenda, intended to reduce poverty, to reduce crime, to increase equality. And what they did was the legislation or the program actually incentivized single motherhood, where you only qualified if there is no man in the house or an able-bodied man. So what happened was women would throw men out in order to get the incentive. So what happened? The result was this. Instead of beating poverty as a way to reducing crime and all that, instead, there was increased fatherlessness, increased broken families, increased crime, increased poverty, and increased social unrest. What do we learn from this? What we learn from this is that when making bills and legislatures and all that, the key factor is to be cognizant of the results, not the intentions. The intentions can be very good and very noble and all that, but the result may actually be different. And that result will be different when we cross foundational issues. Now, meaning that every law has a destination. So is the destination of this bill fine? The destination that the president's bill was, the decision was wrong. The intention was good, but the destination was wrong. So the destination is what you should look at. Where is this bill taking us as a society? Where is it taking families? That is what I want to talk about briefly. Now, we see that the result of this, and that's where our concerns actually come. Our concerns as follows. One, the bill promotes comprehensive sexual education, which actually sexualizes children and society, and promotes sexuality that is based on a wrong worldview of sexuality, and therefore is destructive. Secondly, the bill provides Secondly, um, the bill provides a sexuality education that is not anchored on sound moral principles. Now, sex education should be taught like driving. In driving, you don't just teach the person to move the machine. The person must know the laws and the rules of getting onto the road before you know how to drive. So just giving information and what is sometimes called, uh, accurate information, giving that without giving the underlying moral values and principles is actually tantamount to pornography, which actually is dangerous. And we've seen it happening around the world. Thirdly, the bill is open to sympathetic, or and sympathetic towards abortion. Where, you know, sometimes it's called just tissue from the womb. Fourthly, the bill is infringes on parental rights as guaranteed in the constitution. I've already had people say, oh, but you see, you know, a child can actually should access this without parental... Friends, parental rights is mandatory. A parent has responsibility for a child who is a minor. Starting to deal with the child on things that could affect life, could affect health, could affect so many things, could affect their future, could affect their destiny, minus the parent, is very, 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 very serious. If my child is pregnant, if my child has a problem, has S U R, get me involved, that's a parental issue. And as parents, we actually have a way of teaching children to learn from their mistakes. You've got pregnant now, you've got HIV, then learn from it, so you don't do the same thing. But now coming and taking a child without parental guidance, and you're giving them all these services, is something which we feel is very, very serious. Finally, the bill promotes immorality, which in turn weakens and destroys families, and then which has devastating implications on the entire society. Now, all these concerns violate two important things. First of all, they violate things that hold a society together and promote good health, good wealth, and good well-being. What are those two things? The first one is the family, it, it weakens the family. Uh, because of this, let me just go forward to say that the saying is true, that as the family goes, so goes the nation. So if you do anything that injures or hurts or weakens the family, automatically you are destroying that society. The second thing that we are doing is we are handling issue of morality. Why is morality important? Morality is important because, well, let's first facet, just a quick definition, quick dictionary definition. The morality is a set of customs of a given society, class or social group, which regulate relationships and prescribe modes of behavior to enhance the group's survival. Now, you wonder, why did they put that thing to, uh, to enhance the group's survival? It's because common sense will tell you that there's a connection between morality and the survival of any civilization or any society. How do I know that? Two major civil, two major, uh, social scientists, technology, please help, two major social scientists did a study. Aha, yes, they did a study. One of them was this doctor, this British guy, Doctor De Anwin. And the other one, Sorokin, a Russian guy. They did independently research, and they came to the same conclusion. And their conclusion was this. Civilizations begin in a small way, rise to prominence, reach a plateau, and inevitably go down. And they found out that the same thing always happened just before the collapse of a civilization. Two things, spiritual corruption followed by moral corruption. And they found out that between here, when these corruptions take place in a society to collapse, takes between thirty years to sixty-six years. Meaning that no society has survived immorality or promiscuity for even one hundred years. None, it is not there in hu, in human records. Now, okay, as I wind, as I wind, yeah, let me just read this one, then I go to the, to the side. Look at what DJ Anwasi said. In human records, there is no instance of a society retaining its energy after complete new generation, as in a tradition which does not insist on, uh, you know, keeping sex within marriage. Fine, let me run now to, actually, this is important here, that morality is a national security matter. Okay, because if it is not handled well, it will end in mass destruction, a weapon of mass destruction. Now, let me run forward, I don't have time to go through this, but let me go and tell you the effects of sex education. I won't even go into the history, uh, otherwise I'd have told you the history, it's a very dark history. Started nineteen sixty-four, there was no sex education before, but began with this guy here, uh, Alfred Kinsey. You, I'm going to submit this, but you'll find it later. And this table you see here is a very sad table. This table here is giving, Alfred Kinsey went and got rapists and gave them time watches. And they asked them to rape children and see how long it takes for a child to reach orgasm. And these things you see here, the times, as you can see here, are the years and so on. This is where the concept of being sexual from birth to death came from. This is the root foundation of sex education, that children are sexual. Even talking about it is so pathetic. Anyway, look at, I'll not tell, it's connected to Planned Parenthood and all this, and sorry for those who are considered with it. But before sex education, experts on children saw that what, what children need are these things, learning to reason, submitting to authority, moral thinking, task achievement, self-actualization, mutual cooperation, and social interaction, not sex or sexuality education. Now, let's see the impact. It began in nineteen sixty-four. Look at sexually transmitted diseases, it was actually going down. Then once sex education came in, look at what has happened. Hmm, let's move on. Then look at birth rates to unwed girls, it was actually reducing. Before sex education, it was actually reducing. So look at what happened after sex education. Hmm, then look at pregnancies to unwed girls, fifteen and, and, and all that. Once it was started here, look, the thing just showed up. So, and then single parenthood, I mean, the statistics just speak for themselves, increased, uh, all that. So as I conclude, I'm saying four things that we need to do. Uh, incidentally, this is showing you what's happening in the US. For the first time in its history, boots, that soldiers were on the ground. A nation that did not have that, for the first time, it happened. They're the ones who are leading in sex education or sexuality education. So, and by the way, you need to know this, as the East African members of, of, of parliament. Our representatives, our African bloc representatives in New York have fought and have rejected comprehensive sexual education as African bloc. Yes, okay, let me say that again. Our representatives in New York have completely fought and thrown out comprehensive sexual education out there. Out there, so you need to know that, and it goes on. Now, as I finalize, these are my four pleas. Number one, let's throw this bill out. Yes, let's throw this bill out. Why? Its destination, guys, is, is dangerous, I'm telling you. And I want to go on record, I want to go on record. You go along that path, I mean, already we are seeing nations. We are seeing nations where they are. Show me any one nation that has gone the path of comprehensive sexual education and is stable and is progressing. They are all beginning to decline, okay? I want to go on record, they are all beginning to decline. So that's first. Second thing, strengthen and harmonize the legislation in member states to strengthen the concept of personhood of children from birth. Thirdly, promote, uh, from conception, rather, yeah, from conception. Promote and strengthen parent-led sex education. Let me teach my child issues of sexuality. You, in, in school, they're teaching my child only biology, all right? We never learnt sex education in school. We've turned out right. The only sex education we learnt, or not sex education, the only thing we learnt was biology. When we do plant reproduction, animal reproduction, and then human reproduction in a biology kind of situation, full stop. As for issues of sexuality and worldview, relationship, leave that to us as parents. Because, because sex education is not an academic matter. It's a cultural matter, it's a religious matter, it's a moral matter, not academic. Teach my children biology, teach my children mathematics, teach my children English. But let me teach my child how to handle their sexuality, that's a family matter to be done. Thank you. And finally, member states should strengthen parental rights. Thank you very much, I surrender.
Thank you, thank you. I thank you very much, the representative of the parents. I want to request you give us the, the written document, because like I said, it's very comprehensive. Uh, the doctor wanted to mention something small.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair, for allowing me. Uh, colleagues, uh, as we, as the, the region led by the Chair and the rapporteur are collecting views, but we also as a ministry, we are going to send what we call a comprehensive report uh, for Uganda on the bill. Uh, therefore, I've requested Florence to make sure that as we share these views, we can also avail these copies so that when we make our comprehensive report, it is in tandem with what is taking place here. So in this regard, kindly note down this email, and if you have any views alongside, uh, they can be shared. So the email is F A, uh, R A, R A, N G O at gmail dot com. F A, L A, then R for road, R A, N G O. They are all in small caps. Uh, then, of course, we shall also be sharing the same views together with the secretariat in raw form. Because we want these views to be available in raw form so that even the secretariat is able to, to pick them. Uh, then also, the Chair had also mentioned that when we invited, we also invited per categories. We have the interregious council, we have the youth, we have the women, we have the cultural leaders. Now, if you have a group report, kindly share the report on this email, but also give the report to the secretariat verbally in the way it is, then you can summarize. If you have written your report like five, ten pages, like this presentation, hand it over so that they can verbally repeat it, then you can also make a few remarks. But in addition to this, as Chair guided, uh, the, the purpose is here is to pick all the views one by one. So I am encouraging the Chair to ensure that we keep our five minutes so that each one of these and those who are on the en, online, and those of us here are given the opportunity to have their views aired. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Director. I think, uh, for, for, for the representative of the parents, we give you more time because of representing parents. And they're the biggest stakeholders. So for the others, strictly five minutes. So let's go, uh, let's go here, you mention your name, your organization, then the lady next, and then we finish this table. Timekeeper, be very strict on time now. I want to, uh, I want to organize, Honorable Jojo Dong, is a member of, of Yala from Uganda and a member of this committee. You're welcome, Honorable.
Okay, once more, my name is Pias Okiror, representing, uh, three key stakeholders. Again, I'm a parent, I didn't say I'm representative anyway, but I'm a parent of, uh, two boys, one girl. And also a legal and policy analyst with HLI Uganda and director of law and policy at LEFAM. We have also prepared, uh, a document that we'll be happy to share with, uh, with the rapporteurs. First and foremost, I was privileged in twenty eighteen to be in, uh, a public dialogue like this one at, uh, Imperial Royali Hotel. And I raised issues that I'm going to raise again right now. The sad news, Mr. Chair, is that not any of our concerns were actually considered. I don't see any that has been considered in this bill. And I'll be sharing them. And I, I, even when we wrote a petition against the bill, I don't see any considerations that have been made. Actually, in my opinion, in our considered view, this bill is worse than it was way back in twenty eighteen. One of the concerns we raised is that surely you needed to have a few people invited to discuss this. If you considered key stakeholders, by this I mean religious bodies, cultural bodies, and maybe organizations and what are working with families and children and all that. Unfortunately, I could, I, I, I made contact with, uh, some of the religious organizations, so the umbrella that brings together all Christian, uh, religious institutions in this country. And they, maybe you invited them yesterday, but as of the other day, they had not been invited. UJCC had not been invited in this. And, um, cultural leaders like, we have a number of them cultural institutions, who would send their representatives and speak to the cultural values and what have you that they require, have also not been invited. I don't see any representation from cultural, any cultural institution in this country. I have keenly listened to the introductions and I can really say they are not here. The history of this bill, where, where, where is it coming from? Why this bill in the first place? Is it that we have really a crisis on the, on the sexuality and reproductive health and rights in East Africa that we need this bill? Or are we trying to align ourselves with, with what is taking place elsewhere in the world? Because you visit any website and it's punch on the SRHR, and you have, there is a fight at the UN, there is a fight for this at, at different countries and different, uh, bodies. Are we trying to align ourselves with what the world now, with the world, wrong worldview that children should be taught comprehensive sexuality education, which we have a history with in this country? In this country, an organization came illegally, began teaching, implementing CSE in schools. And what did we know? One day, a little boy asks his father, you know that this is my reproductive, where is yours? This is my sex organ, where is yours? And, I mean, a little kid, well, how do you learn about this? It was found that it has been illegally implemented in some schools. Parliament of Uganda banned it and banned documents that were horrible. Luring children to homosexuality, they were appreciating homosexuality among other things. They were teaching children that they can change their gender identity, gender identity change. They, 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 they can go through, undergo transgenderism and all that. Do we need this in East Africa? That is the question that I want you to really have time to answer. Is this what we need, need for our children? We have talked about mandating comprehensive sexuality on partner states here. However, who, where, where is the curriculum? Who is going to design this curriculum? How will our rights of our children and how will the children's rights be guaranteed? In this country, there was a, a, a framework that was used in those schools, WS, WS, WM, that is, uh, while they start with me. When that was implemented, it was horrible. And the, the agenda behind CSE has been already... And the agenda behind CSE has been already mentioned and how it came about. But recently, we had a recent occurrence.
Yeah, that is again, that is again.
There is a school in Uganda where we have a club. It's called what? World Starts With Me Club. And they are known to the stakeholders, are known to parents. They were implementing this World Starts With Me probably in that club. It was only seen when students went on a study tour and went erotic in the bus. Then where is the problem? Well, how come it was founded that this is cool as this club? I want to submit that this is actually affecting the health and the rights of children rather than promoting them.
Thank you.
And maybe as I wind up, as I wind up.
Members will have to be considerate of others.
Sure, as I wind up, I want to.
Because if everyone takes a long time.
I want to recommend, my recommendation, Chair, my recommendation just, my recommendation said that, one.
Can you give us those in writing? Please, write them down, so that we can have everyone speak.
There is a danger in the draft, in the draft work.
Because in any case, let me get it. These recommendations are coming to the committee. They're not going to be discussed here. So the reason for five minutes is to allow every person have a voice. But have them written, submit them, and we shall consider them.
Okay. As a parent and also representative of the bodies I've mentioned, I want to submit that this bill be dropped in its entirety.
Thank you. And maybe for guidance, please, make reference to the bill. If you're talking about the state provision, no, the problem is you took too much time on other issues, introducing and saying this, religious leaders not being invited instead of focusing on the points. So please go to the bill, look at the provision I'm talking about, give us your comment and your contribution. Yes.
I'm Karo Bunga Idembe from I R S I, Interregional Council of Uganda. On the issue of comprehensive sexuality education, we are going to have a reservation, reservation on that clause. And we recommend to have sexual education. Because already we have a framework where we are coming on agreement, so we don't want to reopen. We know where we have come from as a country. So we don't want to reopen that. And we have been victims of that when we have pushed it under legislation. So we ask that we have sexual education. On the issue of termination of pregnancy under clause 16, there is a provision where you're talking about male. And male in law gives options. But because in Uganda, we have Article 22 in our constitution clause subsection two, we ask for shall, because we are, our hands are held under that. But we know that if you have issues, then the medical people will be able to help you. But there are reservations where you willingly come out and decide for yourself to commit abortion. Lastly, I want to set clause 17.3, where a medical person fails to provide the medical care, the USD $10,000 is very harsh. That is 37 million for Uganda. And how much are we paying medical people? I submit, thank you.
Thank you. I wish everyone could speak like you. Thank you very much. Yes, please, let's go the lady there. Point, explanation, example. Ah, the lady.
Thank you so much, Chair. I'll take like two minutes. I'm Deanna from the National Women's Council. And a clause 13 on the Ministry of Health Services, we want to thank you people that you've come up with very, very, very important things that should be taken in in the health services. However, accessibility of these sanitary towels is still a huge problem. Why? Because the prices are so high. And why are the prices so high? The taxes on these disposable and reusable parts are so high that makes our communities, girls and women in the communities, not be able to afford them. Now, we have free condoms everywhere we move. Why can't we have free sanitary towels for our girls and our women in communities? That is a question for you to debate, our members of Ayala. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we also have experts from Ministry of Health, but they are very quiet. Ministry of Health, the relevant minister, oh, your hands. Okay, let's have Ministry of Health, and then we shall come back.
Yeah, thank you so much. Dr. Mutumbi, I work with the Ministry of Health, Reproductive and Child Health Department. Clause 14 is speaking to sexual and reproductive health for men. And I don't know whether it's an omission for the boys. Because everywhere in this document, it speaks to women and girls. But it was silent for the boys, which they also have issues. That was clause 14. Then moving on to clause 16. A woman may terminate a pregnancy in the opinion of a health professional. We know there are circumstances where the woman's or the mother's life may be in danger and the medical indication of a termination might be indicated. But my concern is the description of a health professional. Even a dentist is a health professional. So I think we need to do more thinking into, when you get to the page, the definition page where they were describing, who a health professional is, means a medical practitioner, duly registered or licensed. Even a dentist is registered and licensed. It means if this gets approved in this current state, even an enrolled nurse actually. And it would be very catastrophic to authorize an enrolled nurse or even a dentist, a clinical officer to get into, even doing a therapeutic termination in the event of a woman who is actually losing her life in such a circumstance. So the healthcare professional, who is this professional? It will open up actually room for quakare. And especially whoever is describing themselves as a healthcare professional. And the last is clause 20, part C. It speaks to increasing access to skilled birth attendants and midwives. I think that's, I think it's a bit of, is it a grammar? Because midwives are actually the number one skilled birth attendants. We just need to improve this right up. Increased access to skilled birth attendants. I can't even put a full stop there without necessarily listing the midwives, the gynecologists, the medical officers, and the rest of the other healthcare professionals that conduct deliveries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have to consider some people online as well. If we can have like this one person, then we come back to the physical meeting. We have Flavia Chomkama online. At the physical meeting, we have Flavia Chomkama online.
I'm Flavia Chomkama. And my bachelor course is around. After clause 15, I pray that we have another clause that in the case that partners should provide a free and fast service to ensure that older persons, 45 to 60, realize their sexual reproductive health. In fact, if we wish, we can look at menopause and andropause. We are a community that is aging fast and we are having likely to make a better recovery for Uganda. And we think we need to prevent the diseases that come with menopause and andropause. So I'm suggesting that we have a clause. I'm going to draft this and share with the email that you have shared, so that we have a clause that talks clearly about andropause and menopause. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing us online to also contribute.
Thank you, thank you very much. We shall come back online later. Let's have, I'm seeing a lady behind there. This pole is not helping me to see those who are behind.
Thank you so much, Chair. My name is Stephanie from HLI. I'm a lawyer. And I had a lot to say, but because of no time, I'll summarize. So the very first beginning, we should look at what, as a lawyer, I'm so cautious of the words used when you are writing or drafting anything. Now, the very, we're looking at a bill that is full of every person, that is full of what we call Trojan horse warnings that are not defined. But we are looking at them and thinking or assuming that the society of people will understand them. Now, warnings like sexual reproductive health itself. Ladies and gentlemen, let me define for you what sexual reproductive health means. And this was an important word from our colleagues that are actually pushing this bill. And from the World Health Organization publication titled Sexual Health, Human Rights and the Law. It was co-published in 2015 with UNDP, UNFPA, UNICEF, World Bank and that. And they did define sexual reproductive health to encompass related, issues related to sexuality, sexual practices, contraceptives, sexually transmitted infections. That is under page 16 of that publication I've told you. Then they did go on to say that sexual reproductive health includes access to abortion. That is on page one. It also includes pleasure and safe sexual experiences. That is on page one as well. It also recognize and diversify sexual behavior and expression. Of course, we talk about LGBT there. And then the right for adolescent to sexual and reproductive health. But remember, we've already defined what sexual reproductive health means. And they say without parental consent on page 19. Then legalization of sex work, that is page 28. And then legalization of same-sex marriages on page 21. And yeah, you go and read the book. Now, we're looking at this particular bill that has Trojan horse warnings and importing all these things into our society. As Africans, we have values. In fact, I feel so offended as a youth to see myself also put under or the government or whichever the law wants to regulate my sexuality. We also had our colleagues saying, well, parental consent is not necessary. But ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about a law that has already prohibited child marriages. I'm not saying that I support that. But it is already prohibiting child marriages. And again, you're saying it has already prohibited child marriages. But children are free to have sex. And in case of any consequence, well, you can have an abortion. You did define for us the meaning of abortion. But I would also like to request that you defined it so that you go on record, having defined it in a very appropriate way. Because we all know it's a termination and a process. This is not a medical bill. It refers to all of us, because it's saying every person, every person, especially, well, girls and women. So if it's every person, then it should be drafted in a way that every person, even the young girl down there, if they explain to her what an abortion is, she can understand it, not in these medical terms. And of course, we do recognize the fact that this is not the first time we're talking about this. We've always given our recommendations and none of them have ever been brought on board. In fact, like someone said, this bill is even worse than the first one. Because it imports other things of which we've already talked about. We made recommendations and they were never put into account. And of course, this comes at a time when our colleagues in the US decide to overturn a particular case called Roy versus Wade. For the lawyers, they know that. And why are they moving from a position that we are currently fighting to take? We're fighting to take it and they're saying, no, abortion is wrong. Even when we call it safe, it shall not make it right when we decide to murder, ladies and gentlemen, that is murdering a child, an unborn child. And we're talking about, well, it doesn't even say that when a mother's right, I mean, life is in danger. Because Article 22 is very clear of our constitution. But here you're saying that when there is need for emergency treatment, the pregnancy endangers the mental health or physical health. What is mental health? If I'm disappointed that I got pregnant with this man who is not ready to take care of me and at the end of the day, I'm mentally disturbed. Is that what you're saying? That I should be able to terminate the pregnancy? Personally, my mother was told that, well, she could not give birth to me. And when she was told that, she said, God knows it all. She refused. I was produced at five months. I am here. I am a lawyer. I want to fight for the rights of those children that you want to terminate because you think women have their rights or because you think that it endangers, it endangers their lives. My mother is still alive. Her life was never endangered. God had to make a way. I was born at five months. I'm here, she's around. What would have happened if she had accepted to do the abortion? So like my colleague said, except for, I think, clause 14 that I saw talking, giving us some proper, I don't know if it's clause 13 or 14, but this bill should actually be redrafted. And forget about this whole thing of sexualizing children. If you've already said that they should not engage in marriages at a young age, then do not allow them to engage in early sex. Because they have no business to do with sex. They're still schooling, they're still in class. They need to focus on books until they are ready. There is nothing like age appropriate. So ladies and gentlemen, I pray that we look back at our values, norms, and so that we can nurture a sensible society. This in our society, African society, has no place. We need to rethink.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Now, I want to put into perspective, you know, when you go for public hearings, people have a lot of sentiments and emotions. But when a bill comes on the floor of parliament, first of all, a member has a right to introduce a private member's bill under rules of procedure. And we work under rules of procedure. So when that bill is introduced on the floor of parliament, the right honourable speaker must refer that bill to the relevant committee for scrutiny and processing. That's why we come here to give you, to get your views. Now, we get views, take them back, we are giving them to us. Now, it will be discussed on the floor of parliament. So I don't want people to get emotional and think maybe these members of Ayala who are here have brought a bill and they want to pass it the way it is. We are getting your views, even as we are giving this bill by the parliament, on behalf of parliament. So we are collecting your views so that we can process them and present a good report on the floor of parliament. Yes, let's balance the board. Let's go behind there. There's Dr. Kasosi here, and then that gentleman, then we shall go this side.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Dr. Kasosi Allen from the Division of School Health and Adolescent Health. We are all here. I think what we all agree upon is that we wish well for ourselves as a community and that we also have a duty and a responsibility to see to it that everyone attains the best possible sexual reproductive health. Part of the work that we do in the ministry as well as what we, when we come to you to get your views, including today, is to see what works. See what works. And so that we can also do, we can provide services that are responsive to your needs. So what I'm trying to say is that we recognize that this is a work in progress. Your views are being collected. And that let's be objective. And I also request that we actually express our views against the specifics in this bill. There's a lot of general. There's a lot of generalizations going around. But please, let's quote a clause or a subsection, and let's have a debate on that. My submission. I request that the drafters, for the drafters, we try to approximate the wording in these bills to the local policies and legal frameworks of the different member states. Case in point here is clause seven. I don't know whether this is section, but seven, number two. It talks about the comprehensive sexuality education shall include in school and out of school. So we don't have comprehensive sexuality education in Uganda. That's on record. We have a national framework on sexuality education, but we don't have comprehensive sexuality education. I don't know any other country that has comprehensive sexuality education in East Africa. In East Africa. Two, as we are adapting this to our contexts, I saw the definition for harmful practices. This is a World Health Organization definition. It talks about harmful practices as relating to women and girls. But as we adapt this to our local context, let's also think about the boy-child banan. Yeah, we could smuggle in the boy-child. Yeah, let's think about the boy-child. Thank you, that's my submission.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Please stick to the clauses of the bill. Take us the clause of the bill and your opinion on that bill. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Prima Kwaagala. And I have a written presentation as well, which is quite detailed. I'm a lawyer too. I have read the bill. I also understood the history as was provided to us by the draft persons. Thank you, Dennis. I find the bill a good compromise on a lot of issues. But instead of reading my entire paper, which is 17 pages, I wanted to share an experience as a young girl growing up in this country. I come from Luwaka. I sat next to this Reverend here, because he also comes from Luwaka. My MP is not here, and I don't know anyone from Luwaka who has been to Iyalah. In Luwaka, we don't even have a health center for facility. I never, growing up, my mom is a teacher, my dad was a teacher. Unfortunately, he passed away. They never told me anything about sex. Everything I knew about sex, I learned from school and from my friends. For us to say we should leave this to parents is really very impractical. There are parents, like the ones I am seeing in this room, that have time with their children. Some of our parents are busy hustling for us to survive. They don't have that time. The government is our parent. It needs to take on this mantle of teaching us. What we should discuss is what should be taught and what should not. But the government needs to take this responsibility of raising their children. When you talk about questions of consent, I found still, I also agree with my colleague there, that there are a lot of definitions that are voluminous. But I understand that ESC bill to be a framework, a working framework for all partner states to define what works for them. So it may be ambiguous, but at a national level, we calm down and start defining what should and should not work with us. So I just wanted to share with that, that we shouldn't throw away the baby with the bathwater. There may be some doubt, but that is something we can deal with at a national level. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's behind. Since we gave, oh, you are there. Okay.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm called Alex Wessi, Lefam Foundation Uganda. I draw your attention to clause six, subsection three B, subsection H, seven A, seven, seven, subsection one, eight, nine, subsection three, six, nine, subsection six and D, which talks about comprehensive sexuality education. I'm going to give the international perspective of CSA. Since our rationale here talks about the international instruments. One, CSA violates our SDGs. We look at during the SDG negotiations, our UN diplomats gave reservations on comprehensive sexual education. That's number one. They gave clear reservations. CSA violates parental rights as enshrined in the International Covenant on Economic and Political Rights. That's Article 13, verse three. Just a moment here. Where is it? Just a moment. Thank you, Sia. CSA violates parental rights as enshrined in the International Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights. That's Article 13, verse three. So that read it, I don't know if time can allow. Okay, Article 13, three. And then the International Covenant on Civil and Cultural Rights, Article 18, four. The Covenant on the Rights of the Child, Article 14, 14, one. And then also Article 14, two. And then CSA promotes abortion. That's contrary to the Covenant on the Rights of the Child. Let's look at Pog of Nine, talks about that. The child, by reason of his physical and mental immaturity, needs personal safeguards and care, including appropriate legal protection before as well as after birth. That's the convention on Rights of the Child. When you continue on the African Charter on Rights of the Child, Article 5, one says, every child has an inherent child. When you go to the International Convention Covenant on Civil and Cultural Rights, Article 6, one, it also offers the parental rights, the right to life. So my recommendation, let us throw this bill out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity. Just want to mention, because I think we've been talking without a lot of data, so it might be important to just quickly mention as we talk about parental rights and we talk about the issue of, you know, access to services. The Ministry of Gender had reported about 1,682 defilements in Uganda. And out of that, 200 were the fathers of those kids who defiled their own children. So who looks out for them? Who looks out for those kids? If we say we're only leaving it to parents and pretend as if we do not live in a world where COVID has happened and we've seen a case where the teenage pregnancy rate in Uganda is 25%. That was in 2016. And we know that by the time we get the new rate, it is going to go up. Who are we looking out for? Are we speaking for ourselves? Or the people who actually need this bill? Let's be honest, because I'm not seeing a lot of honesty in this room. If you also look at the statistics that's also provided from UDHS, majority, 66% of maternal deaths were among women ages 25 and below. 22% was among 20 to 24 years. And 12% among teenage mothers. That's the fact. That's the data, not about our emotions. So as we look at this bill and talk about it, what we're trying to do is we're trying to save lives. We're trying to transform society. We're actually trying to ensure that kids have a better chance than some of us had growing up. And that's what this bill is about. So I just wanted to put that out there. But I think it's also important in terms of some of the things that we're saying in the bill and just to note, because I think this is a very strong bill. But for example, under clause six, when we're talking about prevention of cancers, we did not mention ovarian cancer. And I think that needs to be included in there. When we're talking about the issue around exclusive breastfeeding, I think it's quite important to really look into how we framed it, because most women do not have maternal leave for six months. Some get 30 days, some get 60 days. So how are we providing support to mothers to actually be able to do what we're saying they should do in this bill? When the clause on safe motherhood as well really just focuses on the baby and doesn't talk about the mother in particular. So I think that's something we need to also take a look at and make sure that that's reflected in the bill as it is stated. So yes, those are just some of the things I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There are some that are behind, I'm not seeing. Let's come this side. I think we have some people here. Yes.
Thank you so much. Once again, I'm Sadat Zagziwa. I work for Ngabo Youth Friendly Services Center. Ngabo Youth Friendly Services Center, for us, we work with the less privileged communities. Today, they are called ghettos.
Honorable Sebi Kari, Joel. I think, even if you're in a mosque, I think you must be the one. Yes, you're welcome. Yes, yes.
So when you look at the definition of the ghettos, we are looking at communities and societies with imploded and failed systems.
Honorable, we can join the Honorable Kamara here, I think. I don't know if there's a chair there.
So with the failed systems in health and every social aspect. And most so described as communities with persistent poverty. So in 1934 and 1950, I think the research was done, but it did not capture and try to envision or project the current dynamics now we have. In the ghetto where I work and where I come from, a young person of 10 years is as old as a person of 50 years. Because they all think the same almost. And the behavior is the same. The language is the same. And it is, and to engage in sex in the ghetto, when you talk about katanga, katwe, kamocha, kina wataka, kasamvu, kiunya. When you talk about sex, for us, we start at 10. Yes, in the corridors everywhere, and it is no man doke to see people engaging. Because that is our lifestyle. So now, I don't know whether this bill is relevant or irrelevant, but I'm surprised, and I was asking myself, am I in the wrong place? Because for me, I come from the ghetto, where these issues are common. And people engaging, people. As I talked yesterday, I was discussing with a certain family, and a young person of 16 years was pregnant, and she ran away from home. Tracing the responsible person for the pregnancy was this elder at the age of 19. Because at the age of 10, we have parents at the age of 10. Because some of the families are just childhooded families in the ghetto. Some of the people just come on street and they find themselves diving into the ghetto. Some of the people, they have lost parents. Some of them have HIV. Some of them, it is because of the poverty indices that they find themselves in there to survive. Because accommodation is free, you can dive into a trench. Then tomorrow, you go and find a living. You can venture into scrap collection and everything. So it is easier to live in the ghetto than any other place like Coloro. So this bill, I think it is typical for us. Because in the ghetto, we don't have nearby health facilities to provide. You need to inject some funds to go to the health facility. But in a scenario whereby you don't have funds, don't you think we have the Quak people there to do abortion? Don't you think we have the Quak people there to advise, to misguide us? Don't you think we have a lot of issues? So I think.
So on the bill, what is your, what's your view?
On the bill, when I come back to the bill, however much the bill is specifying young people, young people, but I would love to see an inclusive intention of the less privileged communities. Because if we don't highlight them, we shall still provide services the way we've been providing, but these communities are left behind. At the end of the day, we shall catch up with you when we are marrying your daughters, and you'll complain.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Reverend.
Good afternoon. I am Reverend Nathan Baluwana Mungalu. I am a counseling psychologist by profession. First on the bill, clause nine. Every adolescent or young person shall have access to self-effective judgment and acceptable age-appropriate sexual reproductive information, education and services. I would propose that we add every partner state shall ensure a bit of adolescent-friendly services. Because it's not just a matter of having access, but the services should be adolescent-friendly. Like the way we do it here in Uganda, we have youth-friendly corners in selected health facilities, having adolescent-friendly health workers and the personnel that are trained and qualified in adolescent health following our national adolescent and pediatric curriculum of HIV management, prevention and work. That is number one. The other issue is about the comprehensive sexuality education. Now, I would implore the professionals here, please. Some of us, the villagers, we believe that comprehensive sexual education means teaching our children how to have sex. That's what we think in the villages. That's what we think. That sex education means teaching children how to play sex. So, and even in our national framework, personally, I've gone through it. I don't see where it is written that actually children are going to be taught how to have sex. But that's what we think where we come from. So I would implore that, let us define more. By comprehensive sexual education, what do we mean? Because, me am a Ugandan, in our context, sex education, literally, it means you are teaching my boy how to have. And in our, some of these, our local 190 schools, where these things are not done, in some of the exotic schools, sex education is offered. Personally, I have my son, who is in our primary two, and he goes to a relatively decent school, but they are actually teaching sexual education. One day, he was sick. He was taken to a facility. I was not present, the mother was not present. A nurse came, and she wanted actually to bathe him because he seemed like too hot, the temperatures were too high. The boy said, no. You're a girl. I am a boy. You cannot bathe me. The only girl who should bathe me should be my mother. That's what we were told. Now, not so many children have access to such kind of information. And the boy said, no, until we came, because a nurse, who is a girl, could not touch his susu unless it was the mother. Now, this, so within me, I was excited about sexual education, because I'm sure no woman is going to molest my son and touch their private parts, because he is well aware about these things. Sexual education involves life skills. These issues of toilets. I am a boy, I don't go to toilets of girls. Sexual education, personal health care, self-care, these are contents of sexual education. Adolescence, development, changes, menstrual health. Sexual education actually even involves menstrual health. In May, we have been in the menstrual health month. But girls are reaching the age of 13, their first menses, and their parents have not talked about them, anything about menstruation. These things, in my time where I started from, we could get this information from the school, but now it's not there. Parent rights. We are seeing fathers impregnating their girls. We are seeing fathers and mothers forcing their children to marriages. Actually, families are broken down completely, apart from the ideal families that we see around. Families in the ghettos, families on the ground, families where we work as a society, families are not there. Families in the ghettos, families on the ground, families where we work as a society, families are not there. By families, we mean refugee families, childhooded families, families on streets, whatever, whatever. So we need to do something about this thing of parental rights. We have seen fathers saying no to SRH because they are molesting their children. So where is the limit about the parental rights? The other thing is about this issue of abortion. Still, for us, the Wanaii, when you hear the word abortion, it means, in Uganda, we say, but in this case, abortion may not mean that, you get? So maybe Dr. Mutumba is here, Dr. Mutumba, if you could take us through. When you say abortion, what do you mean? Because if you do not explain some of these terminologies well to the understanding of us, the local Wanaii, we shall say that you actually mean getting pregnancies out. You get that? So we need to know, what do you mean when you talk about abortion? Because people are going to object to this. Yeah. Lastly, post-abortion care, you get? Yes, abortion in Uganda is illegal, but post-abortion care is legal, you get? We're not going to see our children and women dying because whether we like it or not, maybe some of us do not know, these things are happening where we come from. Girls are getting an abortion, they are not given post-abortion care. As a matter of fact, we are barring our adolescents because in the facilities, health workers believe that post-abortion care should not be given to our girls. They are bailing fathers, we the fathers, in fact, we the fathers, we are impregnating our girls. They go to quarter, quarter facilities, they are bought. And once they are referred to health facilities, they are not handled because health workers believe that post-abortion care is illegal. So, and the judgment is they should die, they should bleed to death because they're illegal. But post-abortion care is being offered in our facilities. Therefore, we need a more, you know, Wanaiiized definition of some of these terminologies so that our people can understand what the bill is all about.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, thank you very much. Honorable, let me first give turn to Dr. Kamara, Member of Parliament, then I'll come back. I'll go online first, we have like two people who are online, then we shall come back. Everyone will speak. Today, we have the whole day. So every person will give their view.
Thank you so much, Chair. Once again, I'm Dr. Nicolas Kamara. I'm a practicing doctor, but I'm also a member of parliament for Kavali Municipality and I'm a member of various committee. I want to thank you for this bill. And I would like that we become as open as possible. Because if you look at the spirit of the bill from the very word go, it is an act of the community to protect and facilitate the attainment of life course, sexual and reproductive health and rights of all persons in the community. The spirit is very good already. Secondly, let us not worry about the generality of some of the sentences and words, because this is East African community. They will be defined when they come down. The moment you want to generalize, like to become a law, it will just be defined in other policies and other other things that will be written after this. I want to say, without fear of repeating what others have said, in countries like UK, when they started comprehensive sexual education, the teen pregnancies reduced, and this is on record. Yeah, they did. And you may say, no, or you can say that UK has more teen pregnancies than Uganda. Can I be protected, Chair?
Yes, honorable, honorable members.
I will look for the citation and bring it because I didn't have it.
Members, if you feel that you have a point you want to contradict of your colleague, raise up your hand and with authority.
Yeah. So sexuality education in itself is not very bad for all the reasons we have said. Let us open our minds. For me, I've attended many of these conferences and workshops. The moment you bring in sex, and I've been sharing with my friend, Dr. Chadon, that why don't you remove that thing of sex? And we call it reproductive health. Because the moment you bring sex, people will start presenting, let us now discard the whole bill in an entire, what is, is everything in this bill bad? Why should we discard it? Is it, if the bill says that the information, educational services are included, the right of adolescent girl or young woman protection against female genital mutilation, is that bad? Is anyone who believes in female genital mutilation here? So why do you have sweeping statements, so let us discard this bill? Why? Okay? We could discard something small there or wash it, but you discard it in entirety, really? So I think there are many good things here. Let us be as open as possible. Let us give our ideas. And in the long run, the spirit of the bill should be the most important. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Thank you very much. I'm going to go online. We have some members online. We have to balance. We shall have Mr. Wela Nkumbi and then Simon Ayebale to give their views. And Karo Nyangoma online, then we shall come back to plenary. Just three minutes online. Wela Nkumbi, Mr. Wela Nkumbi. Karo, Karo is available? Ms. Karo Nyangoma.
Yes, yes. I'm a volunteer, my name is Karo and I'm team leader of Ummah's Foundation and also a journalist. And like the former speaker said, not everything in the bill is actually bad. But my only observation is actually about the applicability, how practical is this bill? This bill is more of providing proposals and how this and how everything should be done, but not providing on how. If I go on clause thirteen, that is talking about the menstrual hygiene, how are we going to provide the soil, the dustbins, the sanitary pads? Can we go on the applicability? How will our people, how will our young girls actually access these services? We all know what our budget is like and the priorities. So I see more of the theory bit, but not the practical bit, yeah? Thank you so much.
Maybe Karo, just to respond to you, if you go to clause twenty-nine, it provides that the council may make regulations for better carrying and effect the provision of this act. So those regulations actually put steps and put the implementation strategies. So don't be worried about how it will be done. Regulations will cater for that. So let's have Simon Ayebale. If he's not available, we can come back to plenary here. Let's go, there was a lady here, I think she will think I have something against her if I don't pick her hand. So let's exhaust two people here, then we come back this side.
Thank you, Anet Nandala, hope for the family. One. I want to still recall and agree with what council gave on the definition of SRH. It's very important, also as Reverend has said, that we look at the definition and the source of the definition. Members, I want us to agree. You know, there is somehow, the way money makes us to lose focus. The people that sponsor many of these things, they are pushing for what they believe, they are pushing for their values, and we are riding on their definitions and not ours. So what point do I make there? I want, if you really want to keep that bill, we need to bring back those definitions to what is acceptable to us, not what is acceptable to the founder. Number two. Language is very important. She's a lawyer. I have a case in court where they have challenged me. In my understanding, I really know what I'm talking about. Then a lawyer just plays around with the word and they leave you angas, you understand? So we don't have to take any word for granted. Every word means a lot. Someone will twist it to their benefit. If you say abortion, we know medically, there are those, whatever you may define it, but not like induced. But me, who would want to carry it on for selfish reasons, I will use the same word. The next I would want to say. Clause four. Every person to access HRH services. She still mentioned, who is every person? Every person, I will therefore give those HR services to a ten-year-old, to a nine-year-old. I once witnessed an outreach where they were giving family planning services to ten-year-olds, to twelve-year-olds. And those are your children, members, as you're here deliberating. If your child came to you at ten years and asked you for family planning device, would you give them? Oh, you're busy giving to other people's children, but you think yours should be protected. Then, what next? Clause six. Three. Access to safe abortion. I would beg council and East African legislation and whatever. If we can spend the money and the effort that we are spending to say we want safe abortions, why can't we spend it to support these mothers who think they have unwanted pregnancies? We know people can be raped. We know people can have incest. And I like what somebody said, I think somewhere here. I'm sure some of us are outcomes of unwanted pregnancies. Some of us here were unwanted. But thank God, today you're impacting your country, you're impacting your environment. So those people, those babies we are terminating thinking they're unwanted. Maybe they are the presidents of tomorrow. Why would we terminate them? I know a guy whose mother conceived him out of, she was a commercial sex worker, conceived this guy, tried abortion three times and it failed. Today, he's an international influencer. So what is unwanted? Yes, we can support this mother if she's traumatized and whatever. We would rather spend resources supporting those people. Next, sexual education. Somebody mentioned that where are the fathers? These children belong to government. And I wanted to ask a question, is government feeding them? Who is taking care of them? What is it that we say, why would we, yes, I know government has responsibility over all of us. But when my child gets pregnant, they will come back to me, not to government. You understand? We have been in this COVID vaccination issue. And I think someone from Minister of Health said, parents have no right, the teachers should go ahead. And then I wondered, after they vaccinated my child and they get a problem, is government going to take care or they will send the child back to me? Next that I want to make comment, my point on that therefore would be, when it comes to sexual education, can we empower the parent with the information we want them to pass on? Why should government skip me and tell my child? Empower me to tell my child what you want me to tell them? My parents, she mentioned something, your parents never told you sex and mine never. Today, I'm busy teaching my children. And I learned from this gentleman, Stephen Langa, he proudly brought up virgins. And I'm doing that, empower the parent. And then, sex also. I want to tell you, members, many times when we are talking about condoms, family planning, it's like the only consequence of sex is pregnancy and disease. Thank you, I'm finishing. But you need to know that sex has a lot of emotional consequences that come with it. We have poor performance in schools because children are getting involved in sex early. So you will have given me family planning, I'm busy emotionally involved, and I'm failing in classes. What, is that what we are driving for? And lastly, yes, someone talked about abortion and mental health, I'll leave that. I will just lastly tell you, members, I was working with a big organization in this country, sixteen years down the road, doing HIV care, and I was terminated. Why? Yes, I was terminated and I'm in court for that. But I want to tell you the genesis of all this is based on these sexual, sexual things, homosexuality being underneath. But even when it came to organization, up to today, even my colleagues that I work with, many of them don't believe it's homosexuality.
My friend, you know the rule of subjudice?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm only giving what I believe in. So we need to be very careful about who is the founder, what is the purpose, what are we driving for, and what are the consequences? Thank you.
You know, I was helping you because if your opponents in the court hear that you have mentioned those issues here, under the rule of subjudice, they may throw your guest out. So I'm protecting you. Let's have someone from gender. Gender, right? There is some, the lady there, here is.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. My name is Patience Namanya from the Department of Youth and Children Affairs, Minister of Gender Labor and Social Development. I'm also the ASRH coordinator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, we have been for some time developing sexual education guidelines for out-of-school young people to operationalize the sexual education framework that is already rolling. I am not going to quote a section, but I'm going to give you information that may help to feed or to inform the sections that, in boosting the sections. Now, first of all, I'd like us not to feminize, you know, make it feminine, feminize SRH issues. In SRH matters, you all know that it takes two to tango. And therefore, the two should be on board. I'm talking about bringing on board the boy child. They do have issues and who do they talk to? Who goes out to the boy, to the boy child? Just like we reach out to the girls. Who do they fall back on apart from drugs? Their peers and any kind of drugs. I haven't seen a section on drugs, but I think it's an interesting thing to think about and include because it is a driver in SRH matters. Then also, people, in fact, on parents, you all know that it is just a small percentage of our young people or children that do have both parents or even one parent and that they are available. Most of the parents are absent. And I do call them IDPs, internally displaced parents in their own homes. The children are raised by strangers and maids, and those are the values that they pick up. I'm not sure that is what you want. In fact, we should be talking about developing a detailed parent handbook on sexual education or on SRH. Because the parents actually do not have the appropriate information to give to their children if they are present anyway. And some of them do not, are even shy, are even shy to speak to their children about SRH. Some of us had bold parents who could speak to us about HIV AIDS and those things. But largely, who helped us? It was, it was the youth corners. It was the church. Yes. It was school because we used to have deliberate sessions every week for the girls, for the boys, and they would speak to us. Of which today, schools don't have time for that. It is classwork, classwork, exams, tests, and all those things. Yet at the end of the day, we shall face reality of SRH issues. The other thing is that, the other thing is that, by the way, you know, as I sat here, I was wondering. The other thing is that, by the way, I, I, you know, as I sat here, I was wondering, what is this discomfort about sex? You, all of you here are a product of sex. Is it horrible that you are alive? Is it horrible that you exist? Yes, be comfortable with it, but let's think right of what to speak to the children, of what to speak to the young people and of what to speak to the parents. These parents you see are the most green people and in as far as SRH issues are concerned. They don't know what to tell their children. And, and look, even their lives, their SRH lives are horrible, sorry to use that word. They need help, the parents need help. So, for someone who is, who needs help, how would they again now help? The other person also needs help. I mean, this thing is complex and sometimes you don't know where to start from, but the parents, I like to, my brother Dennis. The parents need help. We need to think about developing material for the parents. Uh, finally, finally, by the way, and let me say, yes, let me say this, on maternity leave. Did I say anything about maternity leave? For, for long we have been advocating for, for exclusive breastfeeding. For those of you in public health, you know the benefits of exclusive breastfeeding. Dr. Kamera will, will tell you the benefits and my other colleagues here. Yet we do not create a conducive environment to achieve this. If maternity leave differs in various sectors. In some sixty days, others ninety, others thirty, others forty-five days and some selfishly two weeks. And then you're talking about advancing exclusive breastfeeding. How possible is that? Isn't it a known goal? Some things are self-defeating and we need to boldly talk about them and create solutions for them. And then also I think that the Nalungos should probably be given not just thirty days like for someone else, but you stay with a single baby. Or, or right? Maybe they should be given some more days, like probably a year. Thank you.
Nalongo, thank you very much. Honor, uh, honor members and dear participants. I know we have not had a tea break and we need to go for lunch. So I'm adjourning the meeting to two thirty. Let's have one hour for lunch, then we shall resume at two thirty. Administrative arrangements, where is, where is lunch?
I can be figuring out where lunch is as a person is submitting. Thank you.
But I've already closed it.
Okay, so we can proceed I think as wait for other members to join us since we want to have as many contributions as possible but before we begin I want to introduce Honorable Dr. Ryonga Joseph a Member of Parliament Hoima West constituency we are all welcome to our meeting Honorable we are very much pleased to have you here well we shall also be joined by many other Members of Parliament who will be joining us for the afternoon session so we can proceed we start from where we stopped with the questions the rapporteur is here she will be able to record each and everything that that is being put forward so maybe we are having to bring on board Honorable Dr. Ryonga we had already presented the overview of the bill and now the members the participants were giving their input maybe I request Secretariat if you can please share the overview of the bill with some of the colleagues who have who have come Dr. Ryonga and others who have just arrived so could we continue with the questions for those who have not asked please no you already asked we gave you a chance we have to give you a chance for others didn't you ask also ah okay so
Thank you Chair I would like to submit mainly on two key aspects the first one is a general submission one of the things that came up in the morning is around the global policies and framework vis a vis what we are doing and what has been put in the bill Chair I would like to submit that this process that we are going through and even the bill itself is a process of contextualizing the global goal and commitments and framework into what works for East Africa so this particular submission that we are making I presume is to help us guide and make input on how this bill and the act after can work in the context of East Africa so we shouldn't really so much mind about what is in the global framework we have picked things from them we are picked by best practices we have in this bill but then we shouldn't be say fearing because there is a global framework this bill is going to be specific and it's going to speak to the region and it's going to speak to what we practice so we should really stick to that the other submission I would like to make is that on on the section six of the bill we know that some of the countries
One second just let me request the organizers Secretariat you are very the copies to the Members of Parliament we have Honorable Nakato Mary woman Member of Parliament for Weendu District who has also joined us you are very much welcome
Yes on clause six we know that there are countries that have made already their SRHR policies and they have defined service package so my suggestion is that we add that element of the in line with the service package provided by the respective policies of the member states because there could be some service packages that are not included here Because there could be some service packages that are not included here, and yet they are into the policies of the country. And then the other submission is around when we are talking about some of the concepts, like for example on abortion. It's already in the bill, it is clearly defined what we are talking about and the context. So for me, I feel relating it with the general context of the abortion. Because some of the submissions we are making are about general context of the abortion. But I refer us to make our submission particularly based on what is defined here in the bill. Is there some element that we have issue with, or is there some element that we want to add? But speaking about general safe abortion does not really help to make the bill progress. And it actually puts the bill in a wrong position, and yet the bill is very clear about its aspiration on that. And then Chair, I also would like to emphasize one thing. From the learning that we got during the COVID period, the sexual reproductive health issues come with a lot of mental health. I felt like it didn't come out very strong in this bill, also in terms of the service package that was defined, and I think we should include them in clause six. Finally, I think that the question we should ask ourselves, because the other element of the bill have not had issues, but the major discussion have been around the SRHR for young people, adolescents and young people. So the question that we need to make is that, in East Africa, where are our children being brought up? One which is very obvious is at home, and that's where the role of parents is. But we also know that the second area where our children are being brought up is in school. And actually, the children are spending 80% of their time in school. So we must provide the school with a mandate to provide appropriate information on sexual reproductive health to our young people. The second area that would say also where our children are being guided and brought up is in the religious institutions, with the churches. There are a lot of education going on there. Probably we should have consideration for that institution, also to provide, maybe we would consider the churches and also the religious and the cultural institutions. But we shouldn't say that we exclusively put the right for sexuality education to the parents. What about the other time when the children are out of school? And finally, Chair, maybe we should think about the online, because it's also becoming a major source of information. I would submit that the legislators need to think about how we can cater for that, because it's also a source of information. Thank you. I beg to submit.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we had not given due justice to this side. Starting with the ladies. Ladies first. I'm seeing Hajar in yellow.
Thank you so much, Chair. Nagiba Hassan Tegulwa, representing International Justice Council of Uganda. We made some observations and we have some recommendations. In section three, the interpretation of the word abortion, I think it is being shared by other presenters. We are concerned about the loose use of the word abortion and also the word contents. The use of the word of uterus is demeaning. Fetus is a human being that is being formed in religion and a human being is dignified. And our recommendation to that, for abortion, there should be distinction between deliberate abortion and spontaneous miscarriage. Whereas spontaneous loss of a fetus or miscarriage is understandable, the same cannot be said for deliberate interference of the development of the fetus.
Hajar, just sorry to disrupt you a bit. You said you have a problem with the definition section of abortion.
Yeah, the definition.
The definition of abortion. I want to get clarification from the legal drafts person. Where does this definition come from? Is it a creature of yourself and the drafters, or it is an international organizing definition? You guide us, so that we... From? From the medical. Medical what now? From the medical definition. You guide us.
Chair, the definition of abortion is guided by the medical personnel and the agreement that they have reached at the ESE, in the ESE instruments, in respect of the health documents that we have, the policies and the strategies that we have. This is the agreement that they reached in respect of that.
Thank you. Also, in section six, the integration of sexual and reproductive health services in partner states, universal health coverage. Subsection one, where they're talking about that diversity should be recognized. The partner states for which this bill is being made are characterized by diverse cultural values and norms. This gives identities and meaning to the people concerned. This call for a method that is respectful and sensitive to the cross-cultural implementation with the awareness that cultures are not static. Nutrition needs to be given prominence. And for the suggestion is nutrition to support growth and access to early childhood, education should be separated. And can we include a subsection for child protection? Then in section nine, sexual and reproductive health for adolescents and young people. Adolescents and young persons definition. The use of adolescents or young persons has been defined in the bill as ranging from age 10 to 19 years. We are concerned where a person 10 years old has the capacity has the capacity to handle their sexual and reproductive responsibilities independently, free from adult counsel and facilitation. There is also no clarity on who sets the standard for safety, effectiveness, non-judgmental, age-appropriate-ness, and acceptability. Clearly state that every young person should have guided access and a supportive environment. Then section 12 has continuation of education after pregnancy. The teenage pregnancy is being normalized. It's important to support pregnant teen girls to continue with their education after giving birth. However, we are concerned how this begins to form some assumptions from a new normal like teenage pregnancy, abortion, contraceptions. Outline what period should be given to the girl to return to school, because anything can happen again in between. But the bill should start by outlining the old and acceptable practices in sexual reproductive health which should be protected and promoted like values of a family and virginity. Section 16, termination of pregnancy. Termination of pregnancy conceived from rape and incest, or children also born out of incest. Religion does not agree with termination of pregnancy and is considered murder of the fetus, the human seed. The only exception where termination of pregnancy could be considered in circumstances where pregnancy threatens the life of the mother or the concern is permitting abortion in case of assault, rape, or incest. A problem cannot be resolved by creating another. It may be necessary to add religion to the clause as may be permitted by the law of a partner state and the religion of the person concerned. Addition of religion is appropriate because like in Islam, some fatwas have been issued allowing abortion for rape victims along with other acceptable norms and practices, such as adoption after...
Hajar, sorry to... Because of time, you know, we said five minutes.
Can I have a last one?
My proposal would be, since you have it written, you could give it the rapporteur, so those views are incorporated within when we are making our consideration.
Chair, can I have three seconds, please?
Three, okay.
Thank you. Also, about child marriage. Protection of children, this is section 25. Protection of children in subsisting child marriages. This is not in conflict with the Islam and Christian teachings as the section provides four measures intended to protect the children. Boys are also victims. Forced marriage is also a problem facing both boys and girls. The bill needs also to take into consideration the plight of boys in clauses on child marriage. And probably my personal recommendation will be, this was a religious recommendation, that maybe we need to plan to have the bill unpacked, every item unpacked for the laypeople, the religious leaders, and maybe parents, and also give them, support them, facilitate them to be able to do it the right way. Because if you look at the report 2021 from Population Council, the cost of inaction has cost us a lot. So we need the skills, we need to work together, but we need to speak the same language. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Hajar. Counsel, Frida, then we shall come to... Let's finish the behind line. I'm seeing Counsel Frida, I'm seeing... Is it Aisha? Yes, Aisha. Then there's Raymond, and then the student, Wonsa, yes. And I'm seeing another student there. So then we can come back this side.
Thank you, Chair, and Members present in this House. I'm called Frida Muthes. I work with Ubuntu. I am equally a lawyer. I'm also a family person. Yes, so I'm here in very many capacities. I could give submissions on each and every article, but I will only choose two topics that are very critical to my heart and so close to my heart and my experience as a woman and as a human being. Members, I want to first submit that this bill, as I scanned through it, I did not find anything to do with homosexuality in it. So I want to reiterate my point that Members from other organizations, with due respect, that are bringing the issues of homosexuality in this bill, they're just importing something that is totally outside the ambit of what the bill is talking about. And I will say this because my submission looks at what our laws provide, our national laws. I know that the Ayala cannot pass a law that contradicts the law, the national constitutions. And the constitution is very, very well articulative and very clear on prohibition of marriages between persons of the same sex. So for those who are talking about this bill promoting marriages and many families of homosexuals, we are very well aware that the constitution prohibits such marriages. Secondly, we have the National Penal Court that also prohibits practices of same sex, as well as sex workers. My submission was to actually respond to my fellow counsel, who is unfortunately not here, but I know that he works, she works, with people who are present in this room, that, yes, our laws are very well articulate and comprehensive on homosexuality, sex work, as she was trying to allude to, and all those practices are criminalized. Secondly, I want to tackle the issue in section 21, and section three, that talk about assisted reproductive technologies. And my submissions on this are that the definition of assisted reproductive technologies, the language should be modified, because it talks about it talks about having children in an artificial way. Yet, assisted reproductive technologies is much more, goes much more beyond just having children in a dish. And if we can remember, the first successful child who was born through assisted reproductive technologies in Uganda was in 2004. Very many years up to now, we do not have laws in our countries that regulate that. And I just want to submit that the Ayala is doing the right thing to encourage member states to regulate these practices. Not everyone has a chance to have children. The convention, the way people have... So we have moved on scientifically, and I believe that the legislation should also catch up with what is happening. On the same section 21, I want to submit that the bill, that section should actually be modified to ensure that they remove the issue of medically certified. Not everyone in this country will afford, can afford, to actually go and get a medical certification, whether they are able to have children or not. So if we can have the section open and allowing those who are able to to have children through assisted medical technologies, have that. I also wanted to reiterate lastly, Chair, on the definition of sexual health and sexual rights. And my colleague, again, who is not here, mentioned something that was not quoted, but I want to quote the definition from the World Health Organization, which is the adopted definition of sexual rights. And it goes, "The sexual rights is defined as the..." No, sexual health, first. Sexual health is defined as a state of physical, emotional, mental, and social well-being in relation to sexuality. It is not merely the absence of disease, dysfunction of infamity. Sexual health requires a positive and respectful approach. Members, if you could find the World Health Organization, it has a clear definition of what sexual health is, and it also goes ahead to talk about what sexual rights is in detail. And this includes the right to critical realization of the right to equality and non-discrimination, and so many other rights that are well articulated in our national constitution and the constitutions of the member states of the Ayala. I submit.
Thank you. Please try and stick to five minutes, so that we can have a chance for everyone to speak.
Thank you so much, Chair. Frida Medina is my name, from the Ministry of Gender, Labour and Social Vocation, Youth Department. I will say once more that this bill has really good aspects that excite me. And some of those, if I may say quickly, age-appropriate, friendly services to the young people, cultural acceptability, deregulating aspect, and also criminalizing those persons that are responsible for some abuses that are inflicted on the... and also criminalizing those persons that are responsible for some abuses that are inflicted on the young people. To me, once we handle that, you have partially sorted some of the challenges I face when I'm handling issues of young people. So given that we have some gaps, at least for me, that one, for me will make it a path for the for the bill. So, um, I'll talk about the issue of respecting parental rights. Um, we talked about the consent age at some section to be eighteen, especially for marriage, and so many other issues. Then the same bill talks about having the young people access most of these services without the consent of the parents or without the parent's accompaniment. And that one seems to include even the young people that are below the age of eighteen. So I'm saying, if we so much believe in the consent age, can we also include that clause on accessibility without parents' accompaniment to eighteen? So after eighteen, you're able to access without even the consent of the parents. Um, so with this, my recommendation, I have to recommendation on this. One, I've just said that. Then the second one, we need to empower, to have a clause that empowers parents. We are saying we can provide these services, but when the children, we are put in the hands of parents entirely, especially during the time of COVID, you know what, you you, we all know what happened. My sister here was giving us statistics of escalating teenage pregnancies, parents molesting their own children. So can we have a clause where we we empower parents to effectively support their family members, including the young ones, to effectively handle the issues of sexual reproductive health? Then my second issue quickly, members have repeatedly expressed concern about the comprehensiveness, that term that is there. For me, the magic is in the repetition, talking about it and talking about it. And to me, as a person, doctor here was saying, you know, issues of emotions, when they talk about that word, I even grow goose pimples. Because it what comes into my mind, as educated as I am, it is like they're talking about lesbian, zim homosexuality. And this section is on is on clause six where they are even talking about in schools where my children are. I'm like, I'm finished. So my recommendation on this is, can we just get rid of that word? And I've seen it is used only twice in section six and section seven, and then we shall be comfortable and we support the bill. Okay, thank you so much, I submit.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. Uh, once again, I'm Raymond Rioka, I am the executive director of Yadnet Uganda, a network of partners that work with young people in SRH and environment. Uh, I'm speaking here as a person who is working in relation to integration. Issues of environment and SRH are very paramount. And members, as you speak here, you cannot leave alone environment in SRH discourse. So for us who are public health specialists and environmental activists, we think we need to have a connotation of SRH environment protection in SRH discourse. How? Talk about menstrual hygiene, and you're promoting, we are promoting making reusable pads. That disposal should be your interest as well. As you talk about SRH, as you talk about SRH, the business. So in this whole bill, I didn't see anything to do with environmental protection, which is very, very paramount if you are to meet an STDG agenda twenty-thirty. So the nexus of SRH and environment is paramount, and SRH has a role to play in contributing sustainable environment. That is one, and I will I will share this text to the to the team. The other one, I want to repeat what Frida Medina has mentioned. Uh, some of us were part of the previous draft. We vehemently requested to remove the word comprehensive, but it's still surfacing. Who is bringing it back? Who is who is who is who is the? Whose interests? Is it to you, Dennis, uh, 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 my boss, Namara, which I know you can't? The last draft, we gave it out, and we committed as a country, the government launched the national strategic education framework, and we are moving with it. Okay? So who's the phone deed back is the question? So I request the drafters kindly, for the sake of Uganda as a nation, and for the safety of the generation, remove the word comprehensive, because you cannot explain it, what it means. Let's agree as a country, remove it out. And then we go with our norms of ensuring that we grow a nation with a stronger heads and morals. Uh, secondly, I'd contain, uh, section two, I'd contain, we accept, uh, and we agree, the issue of health worker provider. You are saying a healthcare provider or health professional providing sexual or reproductive services should before providing the required services, explain to the adolescent or young person the nature consequences of the specific sexual or reproductive services. Perfect. That has been missing, that was missing in previous draft. And we happen to coming here because health workers have a role to play to understand what these young people are going through before giving them services. That calls for capacity building, health workers to understand what the young people, the girls, the young people coming to them are passing through. So our concern about the information given to them, the issue of confidentiality of that information is paramount. For effective ensuring that this safeguarding of this information, the young people give to the to the health workers, can we have an area to put confidentiality of that information? Otherwise, young people will refuse to to open up and inform what is happening with them. So I request that as we add on this, very good, but have a subsection that talks about confidentiality of this information, the young people give to the health provider. Otherwise, young people might feel that maybe Medina, as a health worker, knows my auntie, maybe she will report me. Altogether, so let's, confidentiality is very key, so I request that one. The last one I'm talking about, and it's coming on, this bill, it looks to be a legislation, yes? As the as the East African states, it's the financing are very paramount, financing for SRH. Governments, for example, Uganda, is the second to the Abuja Declaration, that is for fifteen percent budget to the health sector. Uganda now is eight point two, as part of this budget of the past last week, eight point two percent. But they committed fifteen percent, then also they set the extra commitments, the protocols. Can you some, can you have something that compare our nations, our states, to compare sources, both human and financial, for effective SRH delivery? Because our budgets of nations are hinged on the foreign governments. Domestic resources are very paramount. How much are you committing governments to increase their national budgets to fifteen percent? All our Eastern states committed to them, but how much does Kenya, how much does Tanzania commit to this budget? So I request that in this bill, we have a need to do with financial allocation by governments to SRH, SRH delivery. Otherwise, unless in this law, any government will give whichever budget. Let's have resource, sustainable financing reflected in this budget. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Julia, I'm from Unsa. Um, my concern, some of the things have been talked about, but briefly, on the issue of sexuality education. The fact is that there is a lot of wrong information in schools. I represent students, so I know this. And I think the problem from the side of parents is what exactly is passed on to their children. So if we can define this based on our values, what exactly we parents want our children to know? Because it is really selfish for parents to think that they are the only ones supposed to play this role. And like Ajat said, COVID actually proved otherwise. Children were in hands of family, like community, and what happened, we all saw it. What about if we collectively come together and pass on this information? Get rid of wrong information and myths, and then empower our children to live in this generation, having right access to these services and information. Uh, but Chair, my concerns, uh, um, on clause seven, yeah, F, why you're saying the need to protect children and adolescents from sexual exploitation and abuse, including abuse on online platforms? Like one of the members mentioned, I've read through over and over again, but there is limited information regarding use of online platforms. We know as as soon as this bill is passed, we're all not going to be, um, it's it's going to be hard to keep this in the terms that age restricted and everything because of online. And we, the young people, are using online platforms. So I I request that our consideration is put to have a clause specifically on regulation of this entire information in this bill, how it will be implemented online specifically to safeguard the use of whatever we are pushing for online. And also clause thirteen, um, on mental health, uh, men, sorry, menstrual health. Menstrual health is just beyond accessibility to reusable or disposable pads, facilities. It goes as far as menstrual education. Can we also have a clause on menstrual health education? Because lately, we have very many cases of UTIs that are just as a result of young girls not knowing how to keep clean or how to manage their menstrual hygiene. So can we have a provision for menstrual health education? That all said, I'd like to also add my voice to appreciate specific clauses in this bill that are actually empowering, especially the young generation. Because we believe as students, we've seen a lot happening in schools, in our communities, and just having a chance to have access to right information, access to services, is going to really help the generation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I think now the representative of the parents, the young lady seems to be challenging you. But because, it's okay, you'll you'll come in later, you'll come in later. Because you have said, if if we parents know everything about sexuality that should be provided, that information to our children, how come during COVID, the rate of pregnancies, when they were under your care, the rate went up by a hundred, almost by fifty, sixty percent? You respond that one? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yes, my name is Chira Bo-Nikol. I am a lawyer, I am with Life and Family Foundation Uganda. So the issues with this bill are quite many, as many have addressed. But when we look straight from clause one, or just the title of the bill itself, East African Community Sexual and Reproductive Health Bill, as some people have already stated, that term, sexual and reproductive health, when you look just even a Google search internationally, that term sexual and reproductive health, even when you add and rights, has been known to encompass all the things that include abortion, LGBT. That is why when someone says that, okay, yeah, the bill doesn't, you know, include homosexuality in it, we know because we've been seeing these terms being used everywhere, they encompass all those things. And even in the documentation that we have prepared, we will submit it and with links and also proof to show that these terms exactly encompass all that. When you look at clause two D, clause two D, um, talks about to facilitate and promote reduction, blah, 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 unsafe abortions, even when you go into the definition section or the interpretation section that talks about unsafe abortions, what are unsafe abortions? Because if an abortion is the termination of a pregnancy, and the termination of a pregnancy is killing the child that is in the womb, what exactly is safe about that? You may make it safe for the woman that is undergoing that process, but when this woman walks into that abortion clinic or hospital or whatever, two people are going to go in, one person is going to come out. Who exactly is it safe for? We also have to think about how are Ugandan laws recognize the personhood of the unborn child? So when you look at the interpretation section, and it talks about the definition of abortion, and it says removing the contents of the uterus. Why would we call an unborn child the contents of a uterus? Our own constitution says this is an unborn child. Why then would the bill say contents of the uterus? Are we contents outside the uterus now? Doesn't make sense. Yes, it also says fetus, but the fact, outside the uterus, but abortion itself, that definition is killing an unborn child. I am still talking, please.
Uh, in the parliamentary procedure, she wants to give some information to you, which could help you. Honorable Nakato. Microphone, please.
Thank you once again. I have not, let me take this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Honorable Nakato Mary Annett, woman representative, representing the people of Uyandi. I'm proud to be a health worker. Now, there is something that is really twisting people's brains here. It is good I'm a midwife, and I have some doctors here around, present me, near me. So we have what we call an abortion. I want to go slowly, slowly, you know, medical is very difficult. Now, when, I wish I had something to elaborate, we have the first word above is an abortion. Then we have septic abortion and not septic abortion, okay? An abortion may either be spontaneous or crude. Spontaneous is the one that comes out on its own or by its own. Then crude, it is the one we call in your, by your law, you call it criminal abortion. And then we have miscarriage. An abortion is below twenty-eight weeks. Then a miscarriage is after twenty-eight weeks. Twenty-eight weeks, each month, we count four weeks. That is one month, two months, three weeks. So divide twenty-eight weeks divided by four, those are the months that are meaning. So when we say miscarriage, a miscarriage also can be spontaneous or induced. A miscarriage, yes, a woman may prefer to induce a pregnancy even after twenty-eight weeks. That's why most of them lose their lives because almost every body part is embedded and already well-constructed. Can I hold on? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable. Yes. Yes, let's go. Let's go back to,
Thank you for that.
To the younger lawyer.
Yes. Nonetheless, we still hold our reservations to the definition of an abortion. Can it confine, can it be confined to what is in our constitution, which is unborn child? Also, when you go to, is it section clause sixteen that still talks about termination of a pregnancy? It has been talked about. That our constitution is clear, even when we look at the Penal Code Act, it is clear the exceptions are in regard to the health and the life of the mother. None of our laws show anything to do with incest, rape. So why should we go beyond our laws? Our laws are clear. And like you mentioned, we are here to confine to our laws.
So your proposal, council?
Yes, please.
Is that the word is like sexual assault, rape, incest should be removed from the bill?
Yes, they should be removed. While we sympathize, definitely rape is a very big issue. But at the end of the day, the morals of and the aspirations of African people are that this is a child in the womb. The humanity does not change regardless of the circumstances of conception.
I saw on WhatsApp, whether it was, I don't, and maybe it was wrong information, where a woman produced a kid looking like an animal. Like a goat, so what do you do with that one?
I hope that doesn't go on my five minutes. Thank you. When you look at also clause six-three, still the same issues, that that should be removed. Access to permitted safe and effective abortion. If abortion is killing a child, it cannot be done safely, cannot safely kill that child. If abortion is killing a child, it cannot be done safe, cannot safely kill that child. When we look at section or clause seven one E, talks about specifically the last phrase or statement, consistent usage of contraceptives and before that, it doesn't talk, it doesn't mention anything to do with abstinence education. Because if we're talking about children, the definition section has defined an adolescent to be someone from the age of ten. Where are we talking about contraceptives for someone from the age of ten? We should be teaching people who are age of ten plus abstinence. They have no business having sex. If you're telling them about contraceptives, then you're telling them go and have sex. Or because you know you're going to be protected and not, you know, get pregnant as you're having sex. Do not sexualize children. That should be removed. Clause sixteen. No, I talked about clause sixteen, sorry. Twenty-one D on surrogacy. We also do not believe in the ethics of surrogacy. There are very many issues that come with surrogacy. So if that can be completely removed, because this is basically womb for hire. Well, yes, the bill does not talk about commercially. This is basically womb for hire. Also, just one more thing, please. The last important thing, because my time was also taken by her.
One minute, one minute, one minute. It's okay. Uh, give her one minute to summarize.
Yes, please.
You know she's a young lawyer.
Thank you. My last, my last concern still has to do with comprehensive sexuality education. Because we've heard from many people here today that there is nothing wrong with that, children need comprehensive sexuality education. But I just want to read for you just one or two quotes from this teacher training on comprehensive sexuality education for East and Southern Africa. This is by UNESCO, UNFPA. These are some of the things that is comprehensive sexuality education. For us, East Africa, someone there mentioned that should come regionally. This is for us.
Let me request you, because of time, you kindly submitted in writing.
I just want to mention one, one, page seventy-nine, page seventy-nine. Actually, page eighty-six, quote, quote, unquote. Adolescents sometimes need help understanding that sexual fantasy is normal. That is comprehensive sexuality education. Are we teaching children that they should have sexual fantasies? No, these are children.
Okay, thank you, the young lawyer. The young lawyer is protected. There are, dear, dear participants. Dear, dear participants, please, let's see, let's have, let's have some order. Let's have some order. You know, we are here to gather views. Let's, let's be very clear. Let's have one meeting, please. We are here to gather views and the views of every person matter. It does not mean that they will form part of the bill. Because it will depend on the views from other partner states and other participants. They must be correlated and ensure we get one uh comprehensive position. So let's go to, I think we are done with this side. Let's see. Let's balance, let's balance the board. Let me balance, let me balance the board by going online. Then Honorable, you'll come in. After online, Honorable Nakato will come in. Yes, Honorable Scovia Simwe, I mean, not, not sorry, not Honorable. Scovia Simwe and Rosie Wachikona, they are online. Let's have one of them. Whoever is ready.
Um, good afternoon. My name is Scovia Simwe. My name is Scovia Simwe and I am eighteen years old. I'm in past year. I choose you and I would love, I would want to step back, appreciate you. Everyone has spoken so far.
I did.
Has spoken so far and my issue of contention here from the previous speaker who talked about how, I'm excited that how we are sexual, the bill calls for sexualizing children because we are teaching them how to. The reality is that people, me, Afasya, who are just playing campus, people are campus actually having sex. People are having sex and no one has educated them how to have sex or how it's, we should not ignore that because it exists, people are school, they are having sex.
Asim, what do you say?
And no one is sexualizing, I don't think that's what the bill calls for. I don't think the bill is telling us that, hey, you have sex, like you young child here have sex. Anyways, then, um, what I wanted to talk about was why I feel like the bill should be passed. Of course, I appreciate most of the clauses, um, but mainly, uh, I want to look at the plot that calls for the harmful practices, those harmful practices that include first child marriage and all those things. Um, because it talks about how the children are going to be protected, like it's going to protect the child, like, sorry, sorry, sorry about that. It's going to, it it calls for protection from harmful practices and it prohibits first marriages for children below eighteen years and sterilization, first um harmful practices such as FGM and stuff. But I'm going to concentrate on the practice of first, first child marriage. And first child marriage is something that exists within the East African community. It exists, we cannot deny, like parents, parents themselves, the people in here at this meeting are defending that they are going to like take the child's mania, sexuality education, and that the parents themselves are the ones forcing the children to get married. To go and, it's like, I don't know, get some sort of bride price or some reward. So how are the children going to be protected against that? If we are living the parents themselves who we are saying that they are the ones that are supposed to like, we are supposed to be the teaching of the uh comprehensive sexuality education. Even the children, like me as a child, I'm here to go to my parents and tell them, hey, mommy, what is this and this and this, I cannot talk today because this is not ours. Right, then also, um, the, the thing of mental, the, the issue of mental health, uh, how the bill prioritizes mental health. Um, people have been arguing throughout the meeting that it's a white thing and stuff. And maybe I am so white, but mental health is actually an issue and among them, people it is. And in the way of public, we saw that like what won't sit there doing nothing, schools are locked. We cannot go to school, like, we're in this situation for two years, two years, we are at home. You know how that affects us, like we aren't doing anything mentally, everything, we're just anyway. Only, oh, I don't want to like waste a little time, only, oh, I'm trying to say that the bill should be passed and it's reasonable for the bill to be passed. I, as I am person, I am nineteen years and I'm in past year of campus. I, as I am person, feel like this bill is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. As Sim, as Sim has said, as she's at the university, people are having sex. So maybe before I, before I get, let me allow Honorable Nakato to come in before I get the second online person. Honorable.
Thank you, Mister Organizer, Honorable. And thank you, members who have contributed. Mine is about, I want to say just one major contribution. The rest would be supplementations. Uh, one is that we should acknowledge the truth that Uganda at a certain grade, we have moral decadence. We like it or not. We imagine that children are very innocent, but in reality, it is, they are not innocent. I want to give an example. How we health workers are telling these younger girls to go and get contraceptives. You tell a younger girl, a piece of any girl, that Uganda says family planning. And when she moves in, she goes with these uh elder mothers. One, she will be looked at as a prostitute or somebody who has already engaged into sex. And then two, whether we leave them or we, we, we restrict them, the truth is they'll go in as young as they are. And no wonder we are registering so many recto vaginal fistulas in very younger children. Me, I come from Bwendi and we are the second, I think we have ranked the second in the whole country with the teenage pregnancy. And of recent, we have had a certain
Honorable, now you're number one.
Person, can you protect me?
You're protected.
Then from there, the timekeeper will be on my neck. And then two, we should also accept that technology has also done it. Sometimes parents are very rigid, but schools have internet. Unless Uganda and maybe fellow members of parliament here, uh, we are the legislators and the lawyers or councils who are here with due respect. Now let us help Uganda to appreciate some rules. If you have put some bylaws, let them work and help people. Because when you look at a person dancing in a weird way, halfway naked, and you find a, a, a townie mother saying, let me go with my baby to watch what? Somebody dancing and they find a woman coming halfway naked, almost to an extent that you feel like picking your clothes and close your baby's what? Eyes. So you should appreciate that. Then I wanted to give a supplementation on surrogacy. I'm a health worker and I once worked in a fertility center. I know what it means. Uh, what happens with these surrogate mothers? They come in willingly and these hospitals have lawyers. So when I'm coming to borrow somebody my uterus, we have cases that are really innocent. We have cases, those who have gone in for criminal abortions, those are at least to be blamed. But we have mothers who have been born and suffered with TB, conditions like a tuberculosis of the TB, of of the tubes, I mean. You cannot deny such a mother a chance to own a baby or to use a surrogate because she has the eggs very fertile, but the tubes cannot let the fetus to cross and meet the sperm. Okay? And two, these mothers come in willingly and we make them to apply and consent. And normally, we recruit people who have carried babies before to avoid somebody running away with somebody's baby. And then we have mothers. Sorry? Come again?
Honorable members, let's agree.
Yes, and actually, all religions have participated. It is because I'm a health worker and we're entitled to privacy.
Honorable Nakato is giving you first-hand information.
Exactly. And for more consultation, please feel free and come. I told you that being a member of parliament is a contract of five years, but I am still a health worker and I love my, my profession. And then two, we have mothers with endometriosis. Members here for you educated, me have told you I'm a village woman. You go to the village and you find a man allowing a woman to have only menstrual days three. The fourth day, Nakato, you came to marry me, give me sex, you like it or not? And such a woman, the uterus is still fresh, even if she denies a man. Some men are alcoholics. I normally tell these women that me, I respect them. If I was a village woman, I think they would have already addressed me long time ago. Because those women are really suffering a lot, a lot. Now such a woman, you cannot deny her a surrogate because it is always done concurrent, every month, and then this endometriosis becomes chronic. Such a woman will never carry, will never have a uterus, which is so fertile, to carry what? A fetus to maturity. Then lastly, in Bwendi, I've had a certain organization that is called Yaya Foundation. Me, as a woman member of parliament, I've refused to append my signature. But she's coming in to say, she's coming to help Bwendi whereby, I'm sorry to say what I'm going to say with due respect. For her, she's fooling us that she believes the culture of Usoga and Muganda and Batolo, you know what are meaning, what women do before they appreciated by men. That for her, she says that it is those things that we pull that are insulating these girls to have excitement and urge for sexy. Now, for me, my debate was, well, I was not, I did not appreciate how she came in because it was as if she's using the lab business, popping in with another thing. I did not agree with her. Every woman, even a woman without dirty bit of it can have urge for sex even more than somebody who went to the bush. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Nakato. Actually, Honorable Nakato, on that point, that's why when we're in some partner state, they ask the question. When you're talking about harmful practices, you're the young holy. What do your young ladies do? What do you go pulling? Is it a harmful practice or is it not a harmful practice? It is, that is a food for thought. So, uh, food for thought. Let's have, uh, let's have, uh, the Minister of Education first. I'm going to come to you gentlemen, don't worry. I, you know, I finished your side first. Minister of Education, then from there, we shall have Rose Wachikona. They shall come back. Yes, I can see the young lady behind, yes, yeah.
Thank you very much, Chair. My hand went up long time ago, but you couldn't see it. Anyway, it's good you've finally seen it. One, my name is Semakula Henry and I work with the Minister of Education. Two, Chair, I like the discussion since morning because it would have been a disservice to you if we all came here and simply said yes to everything. Other is, in my thinking, a dialogue like this one is very good because then you come to hear from all sides. My first point, I want to insist on what Raymond said. I've been attending these consultation meetings for some time and many other colleagues from education. From our context, we had a long struggle even trying to pass the sexual education framework. We went through a very detailed process of consultation. And one thing we picked generally from our consultation is that the C on comprehensive sexual education was totally rejected. Much as there are other issues that some of our stakeholders still didn't consent to, but the C was rejected and we pleaded to you the other time to obviously avoid the C. What I also see when I read the document, sometimes you put it, other times you don't. So there's some confusion there.
Maybe, maybe, uh, just let me ask the legal drafts person.
Yes.
Because I remember this issue was raised. Why did we still maintain it comprehensive? You know, he's the expert. He's able to give us some information.
Indeed, like the Honorable was saying, he has some experience from the medical facility. I have from education, so.
Yes, but I wanted to give you the, the legal drafts person, he want to draft, he drafted the bill. He can tell us the reasons why it is still there. Do you want to say it now or you you wrap up? Okay, okay.
Okay, because as a sector, we even had a lot of struggle with our partners. And one of our critical partners for the information of people here are religious leaders. Because majority of the schools in this country are religious founded. When you hear a school like Chibuli, yes, it is government, but there is a basis of religion behind. When you hear Namagunga, yes, it is Christian, it is uh public, but so we listen to those voices and indeed when we listened in, the C had not been brought. But even then, we need to appreciate that even when we dropped the C, we still had a few challenges in some of them. So as we struggle to actually sell sexuality in its context, let us not then add the other challenge of the C. My next point is on somewhere on menstrual hygiene management. No, it is not on menstrual hygiene, it is about return of teenage mothers. I think in the bill, there's a proposal that we should give them opportunity to return and then facilities for the teenage mothers. So my concern as an educationist is on facilities because we don't want to make schools health centers again. For us, as long as we provide the first, the, the, the chance to come back and indeed for the information of people in this room, already some of the proposals in this bill are ongoing. As a country, we already have a guideline on return of teenage mothers and so this is gathering for this. So I'm not really in for people who say the whole bill should go. Because whereas we are not contented with some few areas, the rest of its proposals are really very wonderful. They are, and so we should look at the issues. We should look at the issues that are controversial and put them right and listen to the people. And to me, the things coming out very strongly as controversial, one is the word comprehensive, two are issues on abortion, and three are issues of surrogacy. I also remember when we had an engagement at Golden Tulip, I was seated in a circle of very serious religious leaders, including the Deputy Mufti and I think Father Kasim Ante. And their issue, they had a lot of issue on the definition of abortion, the content thing, but also had a lot of issues on surrogacy. So if you can clear that, that would be wonderful. Somebody wants us to leave sexual education to the parents, that would be very important. But in our view as education, we believe there are so many stakeholders in the life of a child. It's not only the parents. Right now, we are not home, who is handling them? The housegirls are there, the milkman is doing his work. We have sent some drivers to collect them from school. We don't know what they are telling them. So the duty of providing sexual education is for everybody. When religious leaders are preaching about Jesus and the resurrection, they should also preach about menstruation. They should also talk about STIs. Somebody has just wondered what happened in the lockdown. We have enough statistics to indicate that the teenage We have enough statistics to indicate that the teenage pregnancies went up, but the incest also went up, the defilement went up, to the extent that all of us heard parents crying. When are schools opening? So what caused that cry? Because they know they didn't have enough time. Yes, they are supposed to be the first ones to provide sexual education and we believe in that, but they shouldn't be alone. The other thing, Mr. Chair, I think I'm still within my five minutes, is that the issue of, the name, the name of sexuality education, it is also another challenge. As education, you've shared with our colleagues in Minister of Gender, that as they promote that other out-of-school guideline, I think they should really think of dropping the name, sexuality education. And in our fresh consultations with those who dissented on sexuality, they are making very many proposals of names they think can work. Many have said, "We may not call it sexual education, but call it reproductive education" or "call it health education." When we went to the Muslims from Chibuli, they told us, "Just call it social education. These are social matters." When we changed to Old Kampar, they said, "Call it character education." As a sector, we were even thinking of simply calling it life education because that is what we actually had in mind. But when we went to consult, we received a lot of guidance from those we consulted to tell us that no, the most appropriate was SE. But if SE goes in trouble, then we can drop it. But the other thing to also add before I drop this mic is that sexual education is not only about sexual matters per se, as many people perceive it. One of us already mentioned life skills. If the young girls are to avoid teenage pregnancy, if they are to avoid early marriages, they must be assertive, for example. They must be creative. They must have the power to negotiate when an uncle who is giving them fees is forcing them into sex. And for us at education, we can only get that through providing sexual education. We also know they need a lot of information on STIs, information on family. And just a reminder, for those of us who went to school, in the two subjects called CRE and Islam, there's a lot of content on sexuality. One of the topics in CRE is actually sex, marriage, and the family. So what is important is for us to agree on the content appropriate maybe for school, but not to totally do away with it. In my Googling, I've come across a book on sexual education written by Mr. Langa. But in his approach on sexual education, he follows the spiritual angle. So we can agree, are we taking the spiritual angle? Are we taking, which angle are we taking to our young ones? As an education sector, we have agreed that we are taking sexual education, which is values-based. And that is why what is in our. Then subjects like biology, yes, it is okay to study the biology. But again, in my view as a teacher, the biology doesn't cater for this psychosocial bit. It will tell you about, yes, reproduction and how it happens, but then you're not going to the detailed consequences of you becoming pregnant when you are young, the fistulas that will follow and all that. So that is a challenge. Finally, we have had a program at the Minister of Education called PRC, Presidential Initiative on Aid Strategy for Communication to the Youth. And I know that people in this forum know very well that when His Excellency ordered schools to provide information through PRC, the rates of HIV infection went low. They are only coming up again, given the recent Ufia. Otherwise, they had gone down. Please, dear parents, and I'm also a parent, only that I have boys only. And wherever I go, I ask people who have the formula for producing girls to help me. So I'll appeal to those. But just remind ourselves that somebody mentioned there are eighty percent at school. Those are three months, ninety days in our hands. We cannot simply look on when they are going through menstruation challenges. We must talk about it. We are not, we are not going to keep quiet as they fantasize. Somebody talked of fantasy. Just when you check a quick definition of fantasy, fantasy is dreaming. People can dream about anything, even as we sit here. This one could be dreaming of owning this facility. So that one you can't stop. You can't stop. Somebody also mentioned sex everywhere, even as we talk now in this hotel, there could be people engaging. So that one is also natural. But the fact as I got down is that, let's agree that the bill is important. Let's also look at what is agreeable in our context as Uganda. One of my fears is that when we go East Africa, all the six states can't really be the same. Even when we go just on taboos and customs, we are very different. What is allowable in Ankole, allowable in Uganda, will not be allowable in southern Sudan. And so on and so forth. Did I forget one thing? MHM is going on. My challenge is with the facility, closed twelve, I've mentioned already. There's this bus saga, which people are touching a lot of interest. Since I'm here, I'll inform you that the bus saga is being investigated by the Minister of Education. The bus saga is not a result of a particular school teaching comprehensive sexual education because there's no school that has been allowed to teach comprehensive. There were schools that attempted some time back. It was investigated and the ban was done. Finally, my dear parents and myself, just remind ourselves, sometimes we are the wrong preachers, even from the way we dress. I go to so many schools to give talks. You find some parents locked up at the gate. What is the reason? Dress code. So if you are the parent who puts on a skirt similar to the size of a belt, what are you teaching your child? So we also have those parents, much as we think they are the best teachers. Yes, they are, they should be number one, but all of us should also get involved. Thank you very much for.
Thank you, thank you. I think you have, you have done justice to the presentation according to me. And that bus saga, could it be because of the habits people learnt during COVID? In lockdown? You're coming, you're coming. I know, I know, I know you have a lot of interest. So let's allow others. But you have already spoken. Really? You have not? Oh, it was this lady, you will come in. They say women, ladies first. Have you forgotten? Let's have the lady. After the lady, I'm going to allow someone called Rose Wachcona online, then I will come to you. However, we shall even add you bonus of ten seconds.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to concur with most of the people that I've talked that this bill is, it has nothing that says go and have sex. At least for that, we agree. And we shall not bury our heads in the soil while our young people are getting repercussions of having sex that is unprotected and practicing unsafe abortions. That's the reality that we live in with or without the police. All the bill, people are having sex, people actually suffering the repercussions. So the best that we can do is see how we can make the processes safe, but also teach them how to prevent or how to deter from or avoid having those unnecessary practices. I would like to draw your attention to clause nineteen. I speak in the line of people living with HIV. That talks about people living with HIV. I feel like we need to add a provision on protection from all forms of stigma and discrimination related to living with HIV. I would also, while we talk about the access to treatment for other, for other issues or diseases that come as a result of suffering from HIV, the opportunistic infections, let's also make it deliberate to add services or treatment for HIV itself, the add treatment. We have had several cases of drug stockouts and if it's not given a priority, this may continue happening in our respective health facilities where we get the treatment from. And lastly, I acknowledge and really commend whoever put together the bill for thinking about the training of the health practitioners for people living with disabilities. Could we make this a priority for all service providers of SRH services for young people? Because this has been a very big hindrance to access and utilization of services by the young people because of the attitudes of the health workers, because of the way they are communicated to. But also learning from the COVID period, could we make a priority and indicate it in the bill the need for youth peer service providers in regards to SRH services? Because when the facilities were far away, when the young people were at home, it was young people who are peer service providers that reached out to their fellows by delivering the treatment to their respective homes. I beg to submit, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, we said we first, online, right? Rose Wachcona. If she's there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I hope I can be heard very well.
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Rose Wachcona. I am an SRHR advocate. I'm also a woman and I'm very happy to have this bill. Very excited to have it and we really hope that the assembly will be able to pass it. Some of my suggestions for improvement concern the need to include issues to do with bodily autonomy and also bodily integrity within the definition sections because we know very well that women cannot enjoy their full sexual productive health and rights without exercising their bodily autonomy. But there is also a need to distinguish between consent to have sex and consent to marry. I read and I see that that bill concentrates so much on saying that you can consent to marry or you cannot consent to marry at the age of eighteen. But there are, but there is a big, big problem in terms of distinguishing between what is consent to have sex and consent to marry. Mr. Chair, I think we have been hacked. Maybe the host can remove Tom Wacha from the meeting. The other thing that I wanted to discuss as a woman who wants to benefit from surrogacy is under section twenty-one, where they talk about assisted reproductive technologies can only be benefited from by people who medically cannot bear children. I think this should be left to choice because there are some people who can medically not be able to, be able to give birth, but still prefer to use the option of surrogacy. But I also noted that this particular section does not provide for egg and sperm banks, which are all the rage right now. So again, in terms of regulation for ART, which becomes important. But I also wanted to say that there is a need to emphasize the need to include the issue of maternity leave within the bill so that we can be able to harmonize that. Because you cannot provide for exclusive breastfeeding without providing for maternity leave for all women. And then the last bit that I wanted to, to be able to submit on is on abortion. I know there has been a lot of talk about abortion, but I want to tell you, Mr. Chair, that in Uganda, there are eight hundred abortions that happen every single day in spite of the fact that we have a law that criminalizes abortion and restricts it only for when a mother's life is in danger. So the presence or the absence of a law forbidding abortion has not stopped abortions from happening. I am very happy that this bill caters for post-abortion care because what we see in hospitals is women who come in to seek for post-abortion care. And this care is costing the country almost fourteen million US dollars annually in order to be able to treat it as such. So I think there is need to have space for women to access safe and legal abortions because the restrictions have clearly not worked in our context. And this can be aligned with the Maputo Protocol as is and we welcome the part of continuing to mandate post-abortion care within our context as Uganda. Otherwise, I'm very excited for the bill and I'm very happy to see it passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think now we are going to this side and we shall conclude with this side. Because we have only thirty minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name is Peter Echeru and I come from a family. I also co-heard a family. So someone spoke here earlier on behalf of families and I would like, on behalf of the two families, to disassociate ourselves from those views. Now, when I was in law class, doing legislative drafting, one of the things that lecturer emphasized was that the law, legislation must be based on evidence and must be aimed at solving real problems of the time. The law is not meant to create a utopian society. You must deal with the problems of the time. And I was just looking at statistics from the Ministry of Health and I think we have a problem. And that justifies why we need a law. The statistics from government indicates that fifteen percent of our girls are married by fifteen years. It also shows that girls have first sex on average at sixteen point eight years. They have had their first sex. We also have teenage pregnancies at twenty-five percent. Someone earlier on said that young people have no business engaging in sex. So who are these young people who are twenty-five percent who are pregnant as teenagers? If we are saying that we do not, young people have no business engaging in sex. I think it is a misconception to attempt to think that what the law is doing is to encourage sex. The opposite is actually true. And Honorable from Kabale earlier on indicated that statistics evidence shows that sex education, sexuality education actually delays young people from having sex. He gave an example of Britain. I actually have studies from Switzerland, which demonstrate the same. That where there has been sexuality education, you've seen a reduction in the number of teenage pregnancies straight away. And then, of course, again, if you look at our statistics, sixty-six percent of all new HIV infections in this country, sixty-six percent, are among adolescent girls. So who is saying young girls are not having sex? Are they getting infected by angels or what? Because we need to deal with a real problem. Let's not live in an utopian world. Let's live in this country where we are and deal with the problem as it is. They are not supposed to, but they are having sex is the issue. So let's deal with that question. We are not dealing with an ideal world.
Colleagues, please.
We are talking.
In the parliament, you know, don't forget that we are in a committee session. And we have a sergeant-at-harms in here.
And so it is important that we address the problem. We use the legislation to address what the problem is and not run around in circles imagining a world in which we are not actually living in. And then, important to note, that as we discuss this bill, let's not rely on theories that we read about. Let's deal with the contents of the bill. Because for me, from the submissions I have had, a lot of them are totally out of context with what is in the bill. It is our creation of our imaginations that we are bringing into this discussion. I want us to concentrate on what exactly is in the bill. Let's not deal with what we think is in the bill. And that's what has concentrated, most of the discussion here has been about what do we think is in the bill? But not, I am respecting them, I'm just clarifying. Not downplaying. If, if, if I, Mr. Chair.
Let me guide.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I have preached that impression, I am very sorry. But those are my views.
Let me guide, let me guide also. You know, you can give your view. This is a debate. When you're in debate, you give your view, another person can give his contrary view to your view. Yeah, so, so don't feel, don't feel offended when he says his own view about your view. It is also his own view. So it's okay, just.
Okay, as, Mr. Chair, as I conclude.
Yes.
Consent in terms of on access to family planning. And we are saying that parents must, or must consent. My question is, this twenty-five percent of teenagers who got pregnant, was it with consent of parents? If it was not with the consent of parents, and it is wrong to argue that it is important for parents to give consent for children to access family planning commodities. It doesn't make sense because the truth is that when children go to have sex, they take a personal decision to have sex. It is not a collective decision made together with the parents. And so in as far as their access to family planning, services and commodities, they must equally be given that opportunity to make an independent choice. Otherwise, attempting to say consent will frustrate the whole intention of that clause. I thank you so much.
Thank you. But when you say a right to access reproductive, family planning, that includes condoms? But, but, but let me ask. If a child is going to have sex without a condom or is going to have sex with a condom, which one is better? Okay, let's get, let's.
People who have it, one, two.
Let's go here. Please keep it very short. Some of you have already spoken.
I'm not giving anybody who has spoken.
We are going to give those who have not spoken.
Those who have not spoken.
And they are here. Yes, just make it brief, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Since we are supposed to focus on the, on the bill, my name is Ericana Ndura and I'm from a medical background and I'm a youth. And I've interacted with youths and I want to agree with the previous speaker that sex is happening among young people. That's very true. And being from a medical background, we actually being approached for all the kinds of. of intervention, uh, to help people from getting pregnant and any other things of the sort. But back to the objectives of the act. One, uh, clause two, uh, section D, I beg to admit that, uh, we say to facilitate and promote reduction and elimination of unsafe abortions, HIV and other sexually transmitted infections, and unintended pregnancies. I would like that we remove the word "are" because, uh, in the medical background and even in the local literature, uh, my understanding of are pregnancy would be at fourteen and another person would be at twenty and some woman who has been raped and is pregnant at forty may say this is are. So it is not specific. Uh, then, uh, we go to, uh, six, clause six. Actually, not six, sixteen. Sixteen, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I would like that, since we are representing people, we need to take their views and we need to be impartial. When we say, uh, a woman may terminate her pregnancy if, in the opinion of a health professional, there is a need for emergency treatment or the pregnancy endangers the mental or physical health. I just want to stop from here, mental. So when you say mental health, it's a big aspect in medicine. Uh, if I look at, uh, this, uh, gentleman, I cannot tell if he has a mental problem. And medically pregnancy is an abnormal state. It can induce all the kind of things in a woman's life. So by default, a pregnant person will be mentally stressed. Therefore, this qualifies every person who is pregnant to claim for an abortion at any time. I would therefore, uh, ask that we revise this with co- 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 contention and maintain the health emergencies of pregnancy, which medically we know, there are a lot of things that we know in, in medicine that can be an emergency to any pregnant woman, which we have actually for most of the times have terminated pregnancy. I myself have seen this. So let's maintain the health emergencies, revise the mental aspect of this decision. And then also I would like that we, uh, take advantage and respect the doctors and health professionals who are into this. We provide a clause that protects them, uh, because we have religious, but different religious backgrounds, there are people whose background don't subscribe to abortion. So would want to give, uh, a chance for this health professional to refer this person who needs service to another person who can give the service rather than contradicting this. And then, yes, and then, uh, also on this very issue, I would like that we engage, uh, with relevant stakeholders, religious people, uh, parents, the, the young people, ourselves, to make sure that we first advocate for the safer ways, uh, so that, uh, abortion or getting pregnant becomes the last thought because medically there are other safer ways. Since sex is happening, sex can be there, uh, in, in a safer and much better way. And the last T bit is on, uh, thirteen, which is on menstruation. Uh, menstruation, I've had three medical camps in, 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 in our sisters and brother's schools, uh, mental, menstrual health is not understood properly. So the first clause here, idea number one, should discuss menstrual health education. There are issues like cramps, young girls don't know how to handle cramps and they are there being misled. Why can't we start from there? Then these other things can be an addition. I thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I've heard the young people very serious with very good information. Yes, the next person, yes?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, I would also want to appreciate, my name is Akumo Kristin. I'm from Ministry of Gender, Labour and Social Development. I'm really very happy about this bill. Uh, the content, I think, is good for our, our people. We need to be realistic. In this world where we are living in, we are not living in the olden days when our community was just, you know, tied, you, you don't, you, you don't communicate with people, there is no social media, there is nothing, and our parents would leave us and we grow and find our way. Right now, we are exposed to so many things, our children are exposed to so many things. And I've worked with young children, young girls in schools. What they tell us is, talk to our parents, is the parents who actually make us do what we do. Some of them force us to even to get married at an early age. They will say, we have too much mouth, too many mouths to feed. Why don't you also get a home? Because me, I went to my home when I was, what, young? So we need to ensure that we have something that can make the, the, what? The parents take their responsibility seriously. And secondly, bringing up children is not the role of the parent alone. It needs every part of the community. It needs not, in the olden days, you'll find a parent who is not even your parent will stop you from doing something ro- wrong when she gets you on the way. These days, parents say, don't leave my child alone. And yet, many of our children are getting destroyed because of that. Many of our children, you will get a child having sex in the next room and you leave it, leave her because you believe that it's the role of the parent to do it. That's why we need this, uh, bill very much, so that it can help our children get to know some of the basic ways of survival in this world. They need to get to know how to live in this world. Because the world is very harsh and if we are going to think that, you know, let's leave them to find out, you know, vengeance by themselves, then we are not doing them a favor. We are actually leaving, leading them to their own, you know, uh, uh, their own probability death and all that. Children are having abortions every day and it's not because of maybe sex education or anything. They are doing it because they get themselves into sex when they are actually not supposed to be having it. Because we have left them, they don't know what to do, they think that it's okay because their body tells them to do this. It's better for us to tell them that when you do this, the repercussion is A, B, C, D. When you do this, they need to know how to protect themselves, they need to know how to survive in this world. So we need this bill and we need, let's look at, if we believe that the comprehensive, you know, service is not what, let's define them and put them clear so that they know what we are talking about. Sexually educa- sexuality education has been actually, many people don't understand it. Probably what we need to do is try to unpack sexuality education to people. The reason why many people stand up and start saying that, no, we don't want it because they look at the sex, they, they now they go to lesbians, eh, they go to what, over, all those. And yet, they don't know the gist of the matter of why we talk of sexuality education. So we need to demystify that to our community, we need to demystify it to everybody so that they know. The Reverend talked about life skills, that is, and talked about so many good, you know, advantages of having this sexuality education. So members, let's not look at this bill as rubbish it completely. It has a lot of good input in. What we need is, look at the section that we need to, to make it better and do it the way we want it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Once again, I'm called Om Chadorin. I'm a district youth councillor from Untungamo and I'm representing Cavijo Health Foundation. I must say that a lot has been said and I want to appreciate the drafters of this bill, they have really done their best. Yeah, eighty percent, they have done their best, although there are some issues that we need to correct and a lot has been corrected and we are still correcting some few issues. Yeah, I want to concur with my brother, uh, on, uh, clause sixteen, once this clause remains the same, uh, this is about termination of pregnancy. It, it, it means that Uganda, we have legalized abortion and, which is not the case. So I, uh, we should remove everything, my, as long as the pregnancy is going to endanger the life of a woman, that should, we should maintain only that. Then, um, my colleague, uh, talked about, uh, on clause six, he talked, it says that the sexual, the sexual and reproductive health services shall include access to permitted self. He says that we should remove permitted. Me, uh, I believe this, uh, this permitted should, we should maintain it actually. Cause what if, what if some unsafe effective abortion services are used? So permitted should, we should maintain it. Yeah, I think, yes, uh, and, um, another thing on clause twenty-one about, uh, the sur- the surrogate women, I think also on, on this clause, we need to add more on their rights. Like there is not, we have, their rights are not well highlighted in this bill. So we, we need to include more on their rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And she has brought a very good point on the issue of, uh, termination of pregnancy. I think you have taken interest, uh, Mr. Dennis, on the issue of termination of pregnancy. I think should it be in a tandem with the constitutions of partner states? Otherwise, there'll be, eh? Yeah, could you explain? Because this is a very controversial provision in the bill, I know. It would be good to get some good information from, uh, let's first get on this one, because they are going to talk about the same thing, termination of pregnancy. So we can get some, yes.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, with regard to constitutions, eh, what the treaty requires, uh, is that, and what we do regionally is, we respect the partner states' constitutions, constitutions. Now, all the partner states have domesticated the treaty. Article eight of the treaty provides that they have made a commitment and undertaking by domesticating the treaty that the laws made at the region, regional laws like this bill, will supersede their national laws on the same subject.
Including the constitution?
No, that's why I said the exception is the constitution, because the constitution is the one that gives them power to go and make the regional laws. So the constitution is not superseded by a regional law, including the treaty. So the, 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 the provision that is being quoted is a provision in the penal code, not in the constitution. Because article twenty-two restricts itself to, uh, not terminate the life of unborn, an unborn child except as maybe permitted by, by the law. Yes, now, the law that is being referred to is a law made by parliament downwards. So that's why I'm saying that a law at the regional level, I'll give you a, a good example, eh, which is customs, which is the most effective regional law that we have. Eh, the East African Customs Management Act, which is one of the regional laws that we have, is the regional law that we use, uh, for purposes of collecting customs duties throughout the region, including Uganda, that's what it uses. Now, that supersedes all the Ugandan laws on customs. Now, if, eh, the requirement of the treaty is that if we make a law on this subject, and that's why, Chair, I was explaining at the beginning, that the two respe- permitted restrictive provisions were in Kenya and Uganda. But both those laws make provision or make allowance for, they allow if, 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 if a law permits. Now, the law we are referring to includes a law made by parliament, a regional law. So if the regional law makes that permission or, or gives that permission, then it is consistent with the constitution. Because the constitution already envisages that another law may actually make provision for this. That's the provision.
If permitted by, you know, we shall discuss.
Yeah, he is right.
We shall discuss at committee stage.
He is right because Kenya, um, applies the same, yeah, um, the same concept that he's trying to bring across and giving a provision that, um, if it is permitted by any other written law.
Any other written law?
Yes.
Ah.
So, and it gives a lot of provision on any other written law that, um, in the Kenyan constitution and policies that are, uh, are there within, uh, the Kenyan constitution and policies. And it also includes even, um, other, uh, government bodies like the Ministry of Health Guidelines, the county health policies, the Children's Offense Act, like that. So there are several written laws that, eh, will now be in the co- will be consistent with, uh, what the lawyer is talking about. Thank you so much. So, um, I come from Kenya, sorry, I just picked from there. And, uh, I just want to make a few remarks before I leave. I think, Chair, um, given the, the bill and I've sat here since morning, I think what is coming out clearly from the points that people are raising, especially on sexual education or sexuality education, eh, they are not, um, opposed to the education. The members are having issues on who needs to provide this education because the parents wants to have it, the religious wants to have it, and, uh, other, uh, religious also want to have it. But I want to remind the members, do we have cultural teachings? That's the education we are talking about. Do we have religious laws on even issues of sexuality, though not written, or somehow they're written in the Bible or, or in the Quran or something like that? And culturally, and family? The answer could be yes. Are they violated? The answer also could be yes. Or are they not working? Maybe yes or no. So to some families, it's working, some families not working. And this what brings us to the table where we are having issues to do with pregnancies or behaviors that we think put women and girl at risk. And then we have the issues that we were talking about. So this bill, to me, um, and the way it has been drafted, is looking unto what my brother had presented in terms of dealing with the consequences. And as how other people had put it, that you cannot put, um, a full, uh, control over a population that are also perpetrators of the same thing, to be like the other ones who are guarding. And in what we call about laws making like this, it is a give and take. And you would see how honorable members are in a, um, a very, um, dilemma. Because we bring values, we bring morals, and in lawmaking, it is not about morals, it's not about those values, but it's about what will serve the whole community diversify. The diversity that is in everyone of us. Otherwise, you could have not been having the woman you have. You had several to choose, but you chose one. You could not be loving all men. Two, you could not be having all men or all women, but you had the opportunity to choose the man you want to have. Diversity. There are people who have chosen not to marry. They are among us, they are with us, they are those who have chose to marry, they are with us. So that ability to give and take and also realize that we are not all equal and it's been demonstrated here, that we have different views and with different values. And those different views and values are to respect our humanity. And that's where I want to finish. As, as human, we are sexual human beings by nature and birth. When a child is born and a boy, what happens? We examine when the child is urinating and urinating far. What do we say? There's a boy. And if he's not urinating far, then we say there's something wrong. That's sexuality. That's sexuality. When our women are washing our ch- When our women are washing our children, they tap the penis. If the penis is erecting, then they say, yes, I have a boy. I have a man. That's sexuality. It starts from there. And we identify it from birth and from young. Look at the way we are dressing. That's sexuality. And if we dress in a way that does not demonstrate your sexuality, it becomes a problem. It becomes an issue in a community, in a religious setup, and in any other societal setup. That's how sexuality is demonstrated in our life until we die. Even, even how we bury men and how we bury women, sexuality goes with us up to the grave. It is alive, it is with us, it is us to make what we want of sexuality. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, honorable members, colleagues, we have had, eh, good deliberations from almost each and every participant. They already gave their views, and even in writing. If we open a Pandora's box, it will cause another big problem, because others will want to rebut what this one is saying. So, but it's good that everyone has given their view, and I'm happy, you, you, the parent gave us his written, the position of the written, the, the written position of the parents. Uh, each person has given their views. I want to request, if you have any, uh, suggestion in as far as the bill is concerned, please pass it on to, we have, I've given some email address, where you can put it. As I go into, as I look for that, I'm going to wrap it up with the members of parliament. Uh, honorable, there's honorable, uh, Sophie from Burundi, she's here. There's Honorable Musamali, and Honorable Jojo Dong is our chapter chair. Honorable Dong, you close the meeting, so you'll be the last one to speak. So let us start with Honorable Sophie, uh, Honorable Musamali, then Honorable Donggo, uh, we'll wrap it up, and then we close.
Honorable Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the word, what you want me to speak.
If you don't have, you say it's okay.
No.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I understand, I know the.
What I can say is just I, I really appreciate the way people, uh, from Uganda are, were expressing themselves on this serious topic. I'm very happy, even me have been with the, with the bill many times, you know? But step by step, while, when we, we conducted this, conducted this, this public hearing, I learned much from the bill. Even today, I get chance to learn much from the discussions made by the, uh, people present here. What I can say, the bill itself is good. Let us support it. What you, you, you submitted as a discussions, we as a member of parliament, we've been, we've been sent to meet you just for listening to you and, eh, collect your views, and we really, Chair knows very well that we are going to, to make a general, a general, a general report. We get time as committee members, we get time to, to discuss, uh, in a private way, uh, what you, 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 you submitted. Uh, Honorable Chair, nothing I can say more. I really appreciate how was the, the, the activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Sophia is from Burundi, Bujumbura. She represents that country in our regional parliament. And, eh, you, yesterday we came from Bujumbura with them, we're also having public hearings there. So Honorable Musamali.
Thank you Chair, and all the participants. My name once again is Paul Musamali. I represent Uganda in the East African Legislative Assembly. Uh, one thing which I want to bring to the attention of the participants here is that, eh, from the views we have gathered from participants, not only here, in Uganda here, and the other, uh, parts of E S E. Eh, there are people all over you have not been in agreement. There are those who are for, there are those who are against. Then there are also those who are for some of the, uh, sections of the bill, and others are against some sections of the bill. But I wanted to comfort all the participants here, regardless of your opinion, that the committee is very neutral. Is, we are, we are gathering the views, we shall sit and debate them. And we shall come up with the best position for East Africa. So, uh, I want you to be comfortable and trust that the committee is going to do its work. All of us, like someone was saying, all of us, we are children of parents, and we are all products of certain values. We have the values, eh, so we are not going to behave like we are artificial people. So for that matter, all of you be comfortable and trust us. Thank you very much, uh, Mister Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, uh, uh, let's have the, the chapter chair, Honorable Oj- Oj- Odong George is our chapter chair, as Uganda chapter in parliament.
Thank you, thank you very much Chair. Um, and thank you so much distinguished participants for expressing very openly your views about this, uh, that, this bill, that we, you know, I'm tempted to tell you about this bill. Um, we are in our fifth year as members of the fourth assembly, but we inherited this bill from the third assembly. And the fact that we can sustain a conversation here for one full day means that this bill is maturing every single day. Because the very first day when this bill was introduced in the assembly, there was a match out. You know, that just shows you how far this bill has come. And since then, we have been polishing this bill, one step at a time. Just to, you know, to emphasize what the Honorable Musamali has just said, to give you comfort, that nothing will pass the E S E test without us capturing as diverse views as possible. And that's the nature of legislation at the East African parliamentary level. That we, we, we are alive to the fact that we are dealing with an East African community that is very diverse. And when you look at this bill, this bill touches on matters of development, it touches on matters of rights, touches on matters of education, you know, culture, religion. So it's a very, um, very complex bill, sophisticated in its own nature. And I, and I, I really sympathize with the, with the draftsman. I know that many times whenever we have presented our, the, the, the bill, people poke holes on the drafting of this bill. But if you just saw this bill from the day it started, you can really see that it has had a lot of work going into it. And where it is now, it is one of those bills that has really seen so many legal eyes. So many of us look at it from different lenses, and as a committee, we are very much committed to ensure that we prosecute this bill and ensure that whatever comes out as legislation on matters of, eh, sexual and reproductive health is something that, um, encompasses all the views and sentiments. I'll give you our own experience. When we were in Kenya, um, the, the Cadi made a presentation, and he had gone through this bill. Because the initial impression was that this bill is very harmful. And I think this is where we need to start from. That each one of us has a duty to interest himself and herself on this bill and go through it a inch by inch to understand and appreciate it. There is a race in the social media that you don't control. And sometimes it can be framed that this is a completely useless bill. And so if you go, if you come with that perception that this bill is a useless bill, everything that is contained in this bill, you will look at it as a useless one, because of confirmation biases. But if you take time and appreciate the provisions in this bill, then you will be able to see where there are contradictions with your own values, and you are able to interrogate them and give a proposal. This is what happened with, uh, with, uh, with the Cadi in, in Nairobi. They, they spent time, the Muslim community spent time to understand this bill. They looked at the provisions in this bill and looked at the Quranic teachings to find out where are the provisions in this bill that go against the teachings of the Quran. And indeed, in the end, when they made their presentation, blow by blow, you know? Section by section, where it is consistent with the teachings of the Quran, they would tell you, this is consistent. Where they would find there are conceptual contradictions, they would clarify them and say, I think there are only conceptual contradictions here, but this is what is meant, and they would advise. So each one of us has a duty to really find our own alignment to this bill. Because we all agree, we all agree that there is need for us to regulate. You know, we are sapiens, homo sapiens. Homo sapiens do not be act like wild animals. You know, wild animals, they only have sex for purposes of reproduction, only. But human beings have sex even for entertainment. So even parents who are married, they have sex, not necessary to produce children. The question therefore is, when you, a man loses his sperm, are you already losing a child? Because that's the intention. Because if we understand it solely as a matter of, um, of production, then you are going to make a mistake. So there are some of those rational views that we need to use when we are interrogating the provisions of this bill. But we also have got to be consistent with our own value systems, with our own, you know, religious, we have to be sensitive to that. But again, we have to deal with the contemporary challenges that our children go through. What we have done as parents, and this is a challenge to, 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 eh, our, the representative of the parents, Mister Langa, I have listened to him ex, I don't know for how many years on radio and, you know? I'm a product of his teachings, actually. Now, but what we need to do, and this is a challenge to you and the parents, what we have done for a long time is to outsource parenting to social media. And for as long as we still have an unregulated social media space, I can assure you, this debate will be relevant even in your own house. And I think that we should be alive to that fact and be able to come out and say very, very clearly that this is a very important thing, we just need to find how best, what works for us. But not to say, let's throw it away. Your recommendation earlier on that, let's just abandon this bill, I think was very aggressive. I think was very, very aggressive. Because there are provisions in this bill that I'm very sure also address some of the challenges that you deal with every single day as a parent, even in the program that you, you are, you are, you are having. So what we need to do is to look at what best, what works best. Now, when you are dealing with a regional law, this is where, you know, the, the legal draftsman will tell you. You know, and, and I've heard people saying, yeah, that, why have you come with that provision, yet we rejected it the last time? You see, Uganda is one, is one partner state, but there are five other partner states. So when we are doing this, when the draftsmen are going through all these five partner states, they see, they, 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 they bring what they consider, eh, the most, the dominant view, the dominant proposal from the other partner states. That's why you'll find that the, the word comprehensive kept appearing. But when we are dealing with it now at the committee level, we as members of Uganda will definitely, and I know that my, my, my colleagues have already discussed this, we are going to take exception of that, probably that definition of comprehensive, because we don't want to throw out the bill because of the word comprehensive. Probably that's where the contention is. We are going to discuss it at the committee level, and we're going to raise, amplify your voices on the matter of the defi- but, but all these are matters of definition. Some of the issues that you've raised here are issues of definition. And I think that consistently, the draftspeople are picking those words, and they will, they will add them in the definition section. Those that probably have not been, uh, defined that you've raised here. But otherwise, we thank you so much. As a committee, ours is to listen. And as a parliament, the reason why we do, um, public hearings is for you to enrich the bills with your diverse. By the way, the most difficult part to play is that of a member parliament. Because today, if I stand here and I, and I express my views that are not consistent with yours, you are going to say that that's the most useless member parliament. And you are going to rally religious leaders and so on and so on, say this person is a wrong one. Yet at the same time, I am also representing views of those that may not agree with you. So you know, it's a very difficult thing. You can't aggregate all those, you'll have an identity crisis in, in the end. You don't know whether you are here or you are there. But what we do usually is try as much as possible to bring everybody closer. We may not bring you together, but we shall bring you as much as possible, closer. That's why even in our legislation, they say approximation, because you can't be perfect. So we simply approximate, bring you closer to our national, um, regulations, to our national laws, to the constitutions of the different partner states. That's the nature of, 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 of our legislative function, you know? And, 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 and again, just to comfort you, that in the East African community, we, 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 we only arrive at a legislation through consensus. And consensus means all the partner states must agree. So if one partner state, Uganda alone, protests and says this bill does not represent our views, it can't become a law. So I'm just comforting you to tell you that it has got to pass the E S E legislative test. And it is very comprehensive, it is very extensive. No, we shouldn't be, eh, so much in a hurry, but we must do our work and make sure that this has got to be done, because it's a very important bill, and it's one that we would want to see that we bring it as closer as possible to, um, to what the East Africans would, would, would wish to have. So thank you so much, and, uh, I would like to, to encourage that we continue to read this bill. And the views, please feel free to send the views to the secretariat, send the views to our, our, you know, our clerks are here, the contacts have been shared. We are going still to read through all the, the views. By the way, don't think that your views are minority views, and don't think that because you didn't respond to your colleague there, then the, your, your, your views have been discarded, not at all. Ours is to give everybody an opportunity just to express what they, 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 they feel. So we are going to take your views, the way you have written them, and then capture them in our reports, and then you use it in our discussions with our colleagues from the different partner states. Thank you so much, and, uh, wish you all, uh, the best this evening, and hope that we can continue with this conversation, uh, as the program rolls out. I don't know, we have shared the program with all of you, you know what is going to take place in the, uh, next, uh, other, in the other days. But thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, the hon- Thank you, the Honorable Jojo Dong. Now, I would want to pass a vote of thanks to the partners. And we have U N F P A, Anaso, Sehod, how do they pronounce it? Sehad, Ipass, Kellin, I P P F, Akinamama, Africa. Want to thank you so much for your partnership in supporting the meeting today. And also want to assure you that we shall continue working together to ensure that the views of East Africans are put into perspective. I'm informed, we have some administrative arrangements, announcements. So please, as you come, we have two email addresses where you can send your views. There is, if you have other views, please you send them on this email, these two emails. Onantawa, that's one word, Onantawa, at E S C headquarters, or E S H Q. I wish they can write it here. Please, write it here. So as they write, let's have the administrative arrangements, announcements.
Thank you so much.